Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Pittsburgh Planning Board, Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024. I usually run, read my opening statement regarding the procedures. All meetings of the Pittsburgh Planning Board are open to the public. This does not mean that the public participates in all aspects of the meeting. It simply means that the meeting itself, including all discussions and votes, is open for public view. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing, please raise your hand, and the board will acknowledge you at the appropriate time during the hearing. The board will also monitor any participants that are attending virtually for questions at the appropriate time. Virtual attendees are asked to use the raise-hand function to be acknowledged. One, state your name and address. Two, approach the center table and either stand or sit. This allows you to be seen and heard clearly by everyone in attendance, including those virtually. The Planning Board requests that all comments be limited to no more than five minutes in the interest of time. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recordings of this meeting for public broadcast, and I ask that anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by stating their name and address and seeing none. And just as a quick matter of procedure, I'm just going to take a quick roll call just at the beginning of the meeting. It's a lot easier when I'm viewing the minutes for everyone who's in attendance. So, Alex, can you just say here?
He's not here.
Here, Alex is not here. Hey, see, here we go. Allyn?
Here.
Oh, hold on, hold on. Alex is here. He's just in the wrong section.
Ah.
I just promoted you. He should be here in one second. There you go.
Amanda is not here. Peter?
Present.
There we go. I like it. Paul?
Here.
Tracy?
Here.
Paula?
Here.
Alex, just say present or here.
It'll take one second.
Hi, I'm present.
Awesome. You like it when you've been promoted.
Me, too.
With pay is even better. This is all connecting now. All right, our first item this evening. We do have a couple of things on our agenda. I just want to mention, anyone here for 579 South Street, a little bit later on, they've asked for continuance to our February meeting, and also if anyone's here for 112 Pleasant Street, they're going to be asking to withdraw their application. So if there's anyone here for that this evening, we won't be hearing those particular matters. Our first item is Approval Not Required Plans. We have an A&R, Ian Brennan, for a transfer of property on King Street to create a buildable lot.
I'll pull it up. I should have been prepared, but I wasn't. Give me one second.
Take the floor. It's like he's going to pull up the map, though.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Cleaves. I'm with Haley Ward here on behalf of Brennan Industries. Happy to-
I'll have it up in one second.
Sure.
As I was reviewing the A&R plan, I was doing the math, and I'm saying, wow, this just, it doesn't, it doesn't add up, but that's because the survey was a lot more precise than what ancient records had.
Yeah, it's not, it's not uncommon for assessor's information to differ from, from actual, the boundary surveys. I think as, as new surveys get done, the assessors update their records, and their records get, get better. In this particular case, we expect that the assessor's information was probably built off of a plan from 1922, which had approximate distances, approximate directions, but actually considering that, the areas weren't that different considering the old information. So actually checked out pretty well, but good pickup that, that you saw a little bit of difference. But that isn't uncommon for assessor's information to differ from an actual boundary survey. So what we have tonight is A&R Plan to separate a parcel of land, which is shown as parcel 2B, from 28 King Street, and that parcel will be conveyed to a budding land, that's the land owned by Brennan Industries. And then with that parcel, that land is subdivided into two parcels. So you have two parcels of land, one, one small piece going to a butter to create two lots out of that one on the left. So you have about 16 feet gets taken from, which is shown as Lot 3, 28 King Street, conveyed to Brennan Industries, and then that land gets subdivided to create two lots.
Can I ask one question about one of the notes? So is Note 6 a typo? Is that supposed to say Lot 1 is a building lot? Because Lot 3 is, that, that's pre-existing, isn't it?
It is, but we're taking land from it. So it's-
Okay.
So it was just to, just to make sure it's understandable that, that's still a building lot, and that's being retained by the current owner.
You're not making it non-conforming.
Correct.
I got you.
Yeah, and then we intentionally showed the dimension from the existing house to the new boundary, showing 30-foot side setback. It's, the setback is 15, so that, that structure would still be conforming even with the, taking away that, that parcel.
The minimum lot size is for the zone RB is 10,000 square feet with 80 feet-
Yep, so we'll have 12,000 and some change for Lot 1, and then almost 11,000, actually it's right to 11,276 square feet for what will be Lot 2. And in Lot 3, with the remaining land, would be 20. So we'd have all the area requirements for each of those lots, and then frontage as well. Frontage is 80 foot required. We have a little over 117 for Lot 1, and 82 for Lot 2, and then the remaining frontage of 28 King Street would be 114.
Okay. Does any board member have any questions?
Looks, looks good. Looks like everything's in order.
Just sign whatever you want, Paula.
Adequate access to the lot, and just have to go up in and sign. All right, our next item, we're into our public hearings this evening. Our first item is a Special Permit Insight Plan Modification, 2016-11, which was regarding 579 South Street. They have requested a continuance to our February meeting.
Make a motion to continue.
Second? Motion's been made with-
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I can't. I recuse myself.
Motion to continue?
Second. Let's note that Paul's recused. That? A motion was made with a second to continue. All those in favor, actually, I'm going to take a roll call on that. Continuance, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed. Alex?
Aye.
Allyn?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Oh, I thought you said my name.
Nope.
Yeah, perfect. Good job. Okay.
So we have a continuance there, and I'm going to do another one. I know it's out of order, but we have an application for 112 Pleasant Street, which was a Special Permit Insight Plan Review for reuse of a vacant three-family dwelling. He's asked to withdraw that application without prejudice.
Make a motion to give leave to withdraw without prejudice.
Second? Motion's been made with a second. Going to take roll call. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed. Alex?
Aye.
Allyn?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Oh, I thought you said my name.
Nope.
Yeah, perfect. Good job. Okay.
So we have a continuance there, and I'm going to do another one. I know it's out of order, but we have an application for 112 Pleasant Street, which was a Special Permit Insight Plan Review for reuse of a vacant three-family dwelling. He's asked to withdraw that application without prejudice.
Make a motion to give leave to withdraw without prejudice.
Second? Motion's been made with a second. I'm going to take roll call. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed. Alex?
Aye.
Allyn?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
And, see, withdraw. Our next item this evening is 23 Pleasant Street Apartments LLC for plans to reuse a vacant three-family dwelling along with parking plan located on 23 Pleasant Street in our downtown zoning business district. Hello again.
Evening.
You've got your updated plan.
Yep.
Let's see, a couple of calls.
We also, I don't know if you want to do the plan first, but Aaron, right? Aaron just sent me an email with the-
Color scheme.
Yes.
There we go.
Yeah, so I met with my architects, and we came up with a historically appropriate color scheme. So it's a pearl gray for the body, and then a classic light buff for the trim, which would look something very similar to that.
Looks good.
Peter, what do you think?
Looks good. Yep. Is that Paul?
I asked Peter. This is past Peter's-
Very nice.
...criteria. All right.
And here's the site plan.
I bet. Thank you for that.
I think I answered pretty much all your questions on there, but if there's anything else that you had, or if you want me to kind of go over that, happy to do so.
Let's see, what did I have? I had, I think the only thing in which we could put in the decision as well is just landscaping replaces snow storage, just to mark that there's landscaping in that small little spot in front of the window in the front.
Yeah, yeah, I think in the wintertime, obviously, there's going to be challenges with the snow, so we'll have to put, whatever landscaping we put there is going to have to be able to survive getting some snow on it, but yeah, we'll definitely, whatever landscaping we can fit there, we'll maximize in that.
Yeah, it's most likely mulch and juniper, something that, that'll survive salt and close to it, but that's fine.
Some type of flowering shrub that low maintenance.
Sounds good.
Unfortunately, some of these annuals and things don't really survive too well.
Yeah. We got that little eight, eight-by-four section-
You got it.
-plantability, so we'll go for it.
And we said add vinyl fencing around the trash receptacle area, which looks like you did.
Yeah, that red line there indicates the vinyl fencing.
We did the historical painting scheme submitted, and you were still in search of the sewer connection to show on-
Which is added on this one.
Is.
Sewer lateral should be shown here.
Let me see, the water, not that, I mean, quite honestly, I, I'm sure DPW needs it. I don't particularly care where it is, but I see, what's GV?
Let me-
So there's water, and there's GV.
I think it's gas.
Gravity? Maybe that's the sewer? But the sewer, I mean, the sewer lines right here through the middle of the street.
True, but I think it goes down, it goes down. It's, it's not up. It's the street below potentially and behind.
Okay.
That's what I'm thinking, but I'm not sure why-
I mean, is there any particular reason why we need it to be shown on the plan?
Uh, just, just because it's part of the site plan for DPW for that aspect of it, but I guess it's one of the conditions of to locate that.
Yeah, so my, I know my engineer was speaking with DPW, and I believe everything on here is what DPW sent to us, so I think we have the water line, gas line, sewer line running right through-
Yeah, we're showing the sewer in the street, it's just not showing a sewer connection there. That just led me to believe whether or not it actually connected behind the building since it's dropped elevation to the-
Yeah.
If you have plumbing below street level.
Nick, do you know, Nick's here. Nick, do you know if, if it's, if it's okay, the, the meaning, the, where the sewer connection is, does it particularly matter to you?
It, it does matter. Typically, we like to see a utility site plan that shows all of the utility connections. So I'm assuming you're correct that the sewer lateral discharges out the back of the property to the street downhill, but that is something we would prefer to see on the plans, especially, you know, if, if there's going to be any, any future modification or anything like that.
Man, I've done hundreds, probably thousands of site plans, and I don't ever remember seeing a water and sewer connection on a site plan.
Oh, we do.
Very rarely. If, if you do, it's very rarely.
It's on new construction, for sure.
Yeah.
It's so-
It's, it's not, I will say predominantly, it's not common on our site plans, but-
Well, it is on our new ones.
So be it.
So just, just to speak to that for a second, back when, I believe it was Lenny Laxo was commissioner, he instituted a policy that all new buildings and modifications to existing buildings that needed a building permit, a utility site plan should accompany the application for said building permit. And for the most part, when someone pulls a, a new water service application or replacement of an existing water service application, same with sewer, same with, with drain, typically we require a utility site plan to go along with the, the road opening permit and all that. So it might not be something that's caught necessarily in the planning board phase, but it almost always is looked at during the building permit phase or the road opening permit phase.
Perfect. And, and that's basically what I'm asking, Nick, is does it need to be shown on, I mean, I understand it, you know, it would be easier if it were on here, but does it need to be shown on this, this particular plan?
I, I would say just as, as long as the applicant is aware that at some point that plan is going to need to be produced and shown to engineering for approval, then that's fine. I wouldn't want to hold up a decision tonight, for example, just to revise that plan, but the applicant should be aware that that plan still needs to be created. We do run into some problems sometimes where it's not necessarily shown on the approved site plan, but then it's required during the permitting process, because a lot of times contractor will bid on a, a drawing set that was produced during the planning board phase, and then that drawing set is never updated to address that, that need until we go into permitting, and then sometimes that just causes some friction with contractors that don't want to go back and pay to have an engineer revise that plan.
We will definitely make a note that it's, that they'll be required to do that.
Yeah, we could be submit, submit, submission of a revised utility site plan for the sewer line.
Yep. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, other aspects. It was also showing the curb cuts in here with the roundings, which you, which you did show on the plan for the parking, and you're replacing the fence, and I'll leave that down. Also, from the last discussion, you are going to shore up, is it the staircase? Is it staircase?
Yeah, that's, so if you look at the staircase going down around the back, not that one, the one going down-
Okay.
To, yeah, right where your mouse is there. So basically, when you come down, the area that is on the opposite side of that, kind of, like, to the right of where the stairs are there, there's just, it needs some repointing. So I don't know if that's, I think maybe that could be a condition. I don't know how you'd really show that on a site plan.
Well, you did, you got the stamped plan talking about-
Yeah, I did have, I do have a stamped plan from my engineer.
Yeah, that said that there was just some repair that-
Yeah, basically, just some repointing that needs to get done.
Yeah, so that, it would be like contingent upon completing that work.
Sure.
Yep. That was evaluated.
Yep, okay.
What else? There was a question about the location of the condenser units potential?
Yeah, so I think that what I had proposed, I sent another version of this to Chantel, but I sent her a couple, so I was thinking most likely the porch would be all right, or the low roof, again, that area that kind of kicks out.
Right.
What's that?
Oh, the top.
Yeah, sorry, I wish I had a pointer, but-
I'm sorry, hold on. I will point, and you tell me. You're talking about over here?
Yeah, I can just- So, up in this-
Up there.
Area that's up there, there's a little roof, so I can either mount it-
Hold on, hold on. I had, I had the-
I know your cursor's not popping up.
Yeah, I'm just pulling up, I was pulling up the, the photo, current photo.
I think, I prefer, I think I like that versus it putting on the porch that's at the frontage area, that it should be on that-
Yeah, we usually use those like wall-mounted racks.
So you're talking about right over here?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so the back corner of the building. Yep, yep.
And it was also maintaining the architectural, I mean, to the, to main architectural features of the porch and the moldings on the exterior.
Yeah, so I think what our plan is basically, as I think we discussed last time, is I'm going to maintain those as much as possible, right, the ones that are, if there are rotten features that, that are irreplaceable, then I'll replace it in kind with something as similar as I can find available.
In kind.
But I think, looks like most of those, you know, the big arches around the door and all that, they seem to be in fine shape, so I'm going to retain most of those.
Moldings. Are there anything in, let's show the board notes, there was a, I know a prior, the prior permit, if there were any carryovers, we had, because this was permitted, I think, on two other events for you, for reuse as a three-family, so we're, have high hopes that you'll be moving forward with the project.
Yeah, no, the, actually, the, the building commissioner did allow me to move forward with the structural portion of it, so we've already got the interior demo.
I went by there today. Big dumpster out front.
Yeah.
Doors are open.
Yeah, yeah.
Tempted to stop.
Yeah. Be careful if you go inside. You're welcome to drop by anytime, because there's a huge hole right through the-
Oh, I believe it, yeah.
Building.
All right, let's see. One, two, or three dwellings, retain off-street parking for six cars. Shall be reserved for residents. Required parking spaces shall be reserved for residents of the units designated by signs, et cetera. Stereo improvements, as discussed. We talked about the fencing at the end of the parking area to be replaced. To deal with the water and sewer. Utility aspects for any type of camera inspections or repair. Are you, is it triggering a fire, a sprinkler system?
The building commissioner wants me to have one there. I think that normally a three-family wouldn't, but it's-
Three-family, three-family does.
Really?
Yeah.
It's why, it's why we approve a lot of duplexes, because a lot of people don't want to do that.
I feel like it's different every time I talk to different people, but either way, I'm doing, I'm putting a sprinkler in.
Depends on the, sometimes this depends on the extent of the renovation.
Right.
So an existing building may or may not require a sprinkler, depending on-
Yeah.
-the extent of renovation.
That is true.
Yeah, I guess.
Yep.
Either way, I'm putting one in, so.
There we go. No-
Yeah, that's not, that's not a new thing in the, in the city of Pittsburgh, particularly new construction or complete renovation, it's three-family or more as far as-
Yeah, I thought it was like 75% or more of a building. However, I had a conversation recently where it was, that only applied to four families, but it must-
Yeah. Well, that's a billing inspector anyway, so if he told you to do it, it's already figured out.
Yeah, yeah.
The only thing we talked, but one of the things we talked about last time was just rewording permit condition five, Peter had asked, removing to, to the extent possible, and just replacing with similar language, but, 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 but more representative of what Aaron was saying, where basically you're trying to retain the existing architectural features, and if possible, replace with a replicated aesthetic similar to that.
Yeah.
And you're not vinyl siding it, you're painting it.
Correct.
So then the other condition would be to maintain the exterior paint. And then obviously, the last one, what we had talked about with Nick, is, you know, showing the, the sewer connection on the plan.
Yep, submission of a revised site utility plan. Got that now.
Yep.
Language. All right, this is a hearing. Any board members have any questions for the applicant?
Sure.
Good. And is there anybody in the audience that has any comments regarding this application? I don't see any in, present in the room. Do we have any online?
Give me one second. No, no one virtually. I mean, there's people there, but no one for this.
All right.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion's been made.
Second?
With a second, to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, hearing closed, discussion?
I'm ready to vote. I don't know if you want to go into it any further. I think we covered most of the conditions. Make a motion to approve the Special Permit Sight Plan for 23 Pleasant Street, subject to the conditions we had just mentioned. I, I don't know if you want to go over them individually, or if you just want to give them a shit.
I know, it was about the painting scheme and maintaining of the landscaping out front, the revision of the revised utility site plan, replacement of the fence, reinforcement or repair, or repointing of the staircase, location of the condenser unit, maintaining the moldings of the architecture, main architecture of the building, maintaining the paint.
About the historic, about the paint colors, the, obviously, the-
As submitted.
Exactly. The, the decision should say similar to the photo submitted. And when you get a second, actually, you know what, I'll do it. I'll just email it to Chantel, that way she has it for the file.
And classic white.
I'll send it to her now before I forget.
And any other, there's also just some carryover from the prior permit of just a basic about maintaining the six parking spaces. No dumpster. We've got, we've got the fenced-in area for the onsite trash recycling. Good. All right, I'm good. Anybody else have anything else on there? Nope? Okay. All right. Is that in form of a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Alex has a second, quick second, excellent. All those in, okay, we're going to take roll call vote. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say oppose. Alex?
Aye.
Allyn?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Very impressed. Good job.
Good luck for you.
Thank you.
We have this evening, our next Special Permit Insight Plan Review. Mark Sawyer submitted an application for proposed use of approximately 270, 275 square feet for a private body art studio located at 245 River Street in Riverside Commons in the, which is in our Adaptive Industrial District. Good evening.
Good evening.
Paula, do you want anything up? I mean, the site plan's the original, I'll pull it up. Hold on. Let me get stuff out of the way.
You put together a thorough application. I don't think, I don't, pretty much, I still don't have any questions.
Okay. There we go. All right. Zoom in a little further, so we don't need the whole thing.
I'll say, which is very rare for me.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, quite honestly, I, without wasting the applicant's time, I'm,
I'll say, which is very rare for me.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, quite honestly, without wasting the applicant's time, I'm, I, I, this was a use that more or less I was, thought was part of the original permit approval, we did it before, we approved commercial space in the building, so I appreciate them coming in front of us, we can look at it, but I'm, I'm comfortable with the development.
We put it underneath as a general service establishment, which pretty much, for that amount of square footage, only looks to have like one space, but I figured, it's one for you and one for your client. It's been probably by appointment only.
Yeah, it's appointment only.
Appointment only. Right that, does any board member have any?
No, looks good.
Questions? Is there anything you'd like to say about your application?
The only thing that I noticed is it said approximately two hundred and seventy-five square feet, it's actually only like one hundred and fifty-nine square feet, I don't know if that matters or not.
You know where I got, I got it from the lease.
Oh, all right.
So the lease said two seventy-five.
Okay.
So I want to bring that to your attention, so if it is, if it's, if it's different, I'll mention that it's different in the lease, take, take a look at those, that piece of it.
I don't think it's going to matter for us, is the short answer to.
It's not going to matter for us, but that's where I, I took it from, because I couldn't find, I couldn't find it anyways, you said it was one seventy-five?
Uh, one fifty-nine.
One fifty-nine, one fifty-nine square feet.
Where is it, so when you walk in, like, because the pizza place was here, is it, like, you take that right and it's right?
Yeah, it's like two spaces behind it, there's two offices right there, so.
All right. I was going to say, you did, you had, did he have like a slide?
Uh, let me see what I have here.
Go ahead, give yourself a plug.
Yeah, you can tell us about your business if you want, you're here, so.
That's all right.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right, well, welcome to the community.
Thank you.
Just need public comment.
And is there any board, no, no board comment, is there any public comment, if looking for any hands raised in our virtual world?
There's no one virtually, no.
No, all right. They're hanging down there, does the board have enough information?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion's been made to close the hearing, all those in favor say aye, all?
Aye.
Also, can.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all right, discussion?
I'm good with it, like I said, when we approved two forty-five River, we approved it as a mixed-use development, we approved it with commercial space, the parking was included in the calc, it, I'm, quite honestly, I'm surprised it's in front of us, but that being said, let's just move forward, I'm ready to, I'll make a motion to approve the application for a general service establishment at two forty-five River Street, subject to the, the documents provided.
Second to that motion.
And I'll take roll call vote, this made, motion's made in the second, and we'll take roll call, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed, Alex?
Aye.
Alin?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're all set.
Awesome, thank you.
Smooth sailing, somebody's going to hire you to help you prep their applications now.
Good luck, good luck to you.
Thank you. All right, our last hearing for the evening has to do with the zoning petition, two seventy-two dash two zero two three, referred by City Council to amend the city of Pittsburgh's zoning ordinance, and I wonder if, is Liz here, there she is, thank you, Liz, do you want to say a couple words just about the process, about the amendment?
Particularly what we're here for today.
About that, but just like, you know, the, the process.
Thank you, I'm Liz Murphy, I'm the Director of Community Development, and the process today is to have the public hearing, hear the public comments, hear the petitioner's comments, and make a recommendation to the Legislative Affairs Committee, they will then take it up, if they approve, if, well, if your recommendation is to move forward, they take it up, and if they make the recommendation to move forward, then it would come back to the Community Development Office, and, and we would work with the Planning Board to then create those zoning amendments, so you're not here tonight to propose zoning amendments, you're here to propose, or to, to provide your recommendation, does that make sense?
Okay.
So, so just to be clear, we're, because in the past, no one shows up to these, because usually they're very small zoning changes, so today is, does it make sense to start the conversation to have a zoning change, that's the conversation today, meaning, we say to Legislative Affairs, we think you should start this conversation, and then it'll come back to us for an official public hearing, which, another official public hearing, which we'll hear the details of a zoning change.
Correct.
And even if we say to Legislative Affairs, we do not believe that this should move forward, Legislative Affairs still will most likely take up the position in that petition, and then they can decide whether to move it forward or not.
Correct, that's my understanding.
I just want to make everyone know that this is just a recommendation, it's really a forum to hear people speak.
Correct.
That's what it's for.
Yep, it can help develop or which direction certain things go in.
That may be to come, depending on the outcome of this meeting and the next meeting.
Correct.
Yep, thank you.
So before us this evening, and on, I think, oh, great, you pulled it up on the screen, because it says, there's a specific petition language, so, and we, we do have, I think Council Fleming here this evening, and Council Kuchar, who sponsored the petition, I don't know if you wanted to say, a couple words about the petition regarding the direction of it, there is a little bit of, I'll just say, some ambiguity on, about initiating or introducing zoning changes, so it was just what the thoughts were behind some of that, or where it stemmed from.
Thank you, I first want to thank the Planning Board for allowing us to present this today. Mass General Law, Chapter Forty A, Section Three, the ninth paragraph, paragraph places certain restrictions on zoning ordinance from regulating solar, Section Three states the following, "No zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or unreasonably regulate the installation of solar energy systems or the building of structures that facilitate the collection of solar energy, except when, where necessary to protect the public health, safety, or welfare." Black letter reading of this paragraph would indicate the prohibiting or regulating of solar systems is permissible, if it's for the public health, safety, or welfare, this is also reinforced by the recent Supreme Judicial Court decision, Tracer Lane Two Realty LLC versus Walther, second to the last paragraph, which states, like all you, I'll shorten it for time, "In the absence of a reasonable basis ground in public health, safety, or welfare, such a prohibition is impermissible under the provision," so, which states, "As long as it's for public health, safety, or welfare, we can change the zoning law in order to be able to protect our residents from these disasters that are these solar projects." We can look through the solar projects that have taken place, which is Pearl Hill Road Project, which is my fellow counselor's ward, we can see the disaster, which is the Mad River Solar, which is taking place currently, is in the process, on Ashburnham and Stickney Road, and now, they want to try to put up yet another eyesore headache and problem for our residents at the Oak Hill Project, this solar facility, these solar facilities have to be curtailed, when it's going to affect our residents, their overall enjoyment of their neighborhoods, causing water issues, which is abundantly clear in the Ashburnham Street Mad River Solar Project, in fact, now that we're in the height of the winter, we can see just how bad it is, because now we have a permanent ice problem on Ashburnham Street, caused by the devastation of the deforestation for the Mad River Solar. So we need to really work for our residents, and make sure that this doesn't happen, we need a prohibition against any kind of massive solar project for any of our rural and rural residential areas, this is essential, and myself and Counselor Fleming, we have the biggest wards with rural and rural residential areas, which is why we sponsored this, this petition, we are both in agreement, and we have done our research in regards to the law, we can do this, we should do this, and we have to do this. Thank you, and I'll turn the microphone over to my, my fellow counselor.
Well, I don't have a prepared speech, I just have been opposed to watching lots of greenery taken down to go green, I think it's, it's, it just makes no sense, I, I think we should limit how many can go in and where they can go, I believe people buying in these areas are buying in these areas for the landscape, and when you take down all the beauty of what they purchased to put up a structure that, quite frankly, is ugly, you have just set in motion a change of what's going on in their brain, what they're seeing now, so I, I think we should change these laws and, and do it quickly, before we have so many before us that we can't handle, so.
I did, I know, would take in comment, but a question I had was, in the petition, it was, "In addition, exclude solar on any watershed overlay district, nor shall solar about any R A or R two zoning districts," we don't have an R two zoning district, so I didn't know if you.
I know, that, that was supposed to be R, R.
R B, R A nine.
Yeah, it might have been.
R B.
I don't know exactly what it was, maybe it was my, they couldn't read my, my writing, who knows, but.
So just, yes, so I just want, I just wanted to clarify, so we just knew what zone.
Yes.
And, and just the other point of clarification, and, and actually, this is something, I guess this is directed at Liz, I think I had mentioned this, but something, it was on Tom's radar forever, and it kind of just, it fell apart when he laughed, the watershed needs to be added to our overlay on our GIS, and part of the reason is there's some confusion with what is the watershed, we only have one watershed protection district, it's in North Pittsburgh, there is also a protection district listed in our ordinance in the Shea Street area, that's not part of the overlay, though.
Well, it should be.
Right, but what I'm saying is it's not, so this is the overlay map, this color right here, so the other one, which I, Paula has it, I don't think I have it with me, is, is kind of in, in this southern area here, it, it was never, it was never part of the watershed protection overlay district, the, I, I don't know if, I, I know Paula was on the board, and I, I don't know if you guys were involved when we did the watershed protection overlay district, that was created specifically for our reservoirs in North Pittsburgh, and I don't know how the other one in the south exists, but it was never part of that conversation.
I can speak to that.
Yeah.
So, this, this is a, the state designates the watersheds, there's protection areas called A, B, and zones A, B, and C, this is up to C, which you see here, there is one to the south, but it's for the No Town Reservoir for Lemonster, so a piece of that does fall into Pittsburgh.
Yes, it does.
But it's up to, it's, each community has a responsibility to adopt certain types of zoning for those areas, for protection of citing to certain types of land uses, so there's not discussed in that, however, in the, the one, the No Town one to the, to the south, isn't Fitchburg's, but Fitchburg can, if they choose, to also, also protect that area, so kind of like a best effort type of thing.
Well, considering, considering that it, you know, the Shea Street Brook dumps right into No Town Reservoir, I, I think, in order to be able to help our neighbors in Lemonster be able to protect their water, you know, which, you know, the Shea, the Shea Street Project, the Oak Town Project, let's, Oak Hill Project, has caused quite a stir in the city of Lemonster, and they're very concerned about their, their reservoir, and we should develop a watershed up on the top of Shea Street.
So the reason why I mention that is because I think that some people might believe that that already exists, and it doesn't, so.
I thought it already did.
So if that's something that you want to happen, you might be able to do it in tandem with this, however, that might be an entirely different zoning change, that might need a different notice, a different.
Petition to change the watershed.
So just so you know.
Ramifications of that, too, just to be aware of, it changes what all the lots in that protection zone, based on the city of Pittsburgh ordinance, is a minimum of three acres and three hundred feet of frontage to be a buildable lot.
The unintended consequence there would be, it would make people, you would make that, make it required that they have three acres, three hundred feet of frontage to have a building lot in an area that isn't as rural as the northern watershed, so just keep that in mind if you decide to do that, because you will impact all those property owners in that area where they couldn't create new building lots without having three acres, which is an atypical size for that neighborhood.
Well, considering, considering that the top of Shea Street is pretty much fully developed as it stands right now, I believe the residents would be grandfathered in, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect the neighborhood per se.
It wouldn't affect existing houses.
But if, if, say, you know, additional housing wants to be built, then yes, absolutely, that would, that would be an effect, but I believe all the current residents in the Shea Street area would be grandfathered in, and, and no effect to their properties.
Yeah, that, yeah, that, I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't talking about pre-existing, pre-existing non-comformal conditions, you would, you would be restricting development in South Pittsburgh, is what you would be doing.
Yeah, I, I would be doing, I, I said that for the benefit of our viewing public, as well as my residents that are in the audience today, so.
Absolutely, and, and that's a conversation for another time, I just want to put that on your radar, that if that was an intention, that that might have to happen separately from the zoning change.
It's because it mentioned, like, introducing additional zoning to protect rural residential neighborhoods, since it was kind of ambiguous a bit, just whether or not that was the intention to include another watershed and another overlay, or, I said out there, to be, you know, moving on through further discussion, but just as a point.
So before we get to public comment, if it's okay, Paula, I just had a couple questions, because I just want to clarify, kind of, before we decide, you know, if our recommendation, if it makes sense to further restrict solar projects, I just want to get an idea for, because the wording is very vague, to get a feel for what, kind of what we're talking about, so, it looks like, the way this is written, so obviously, the, the blue area up there, which is our current watershed protection overlay district, it would prohibit solar in that, as well as any parcel in Res Rural that abuts Res A or Res B, so basically, I, I'll pull it up in a second, Liz, I, Liz provided me with a map showing basically this whole area along, I got a million things up on my screen, sorry, this whole area along all of these Res A and Res Bs, I did have one question, do we have any idea about what happens if it abuts a residential district in Lunenburg, for instance? So the reason why I ask that is, we have three projects that abut, two projects that abut, directly abut a residential district in Lunenburg, that, I don't know if it's as dense as Res Rural, because they have different zoning than us, those two, actually, they're both on Fisher Road, those two would be prohibited if you included, you know, proximity to zoning districts in surrounding towns, it would also prohibit anything along, depending on what zoning district you did, or if you just said anywhere where, you know, abuts surrounding towns, it would take away that whole northern and westerly section as well, so you're really, you're really tightening an area as to where it is allowed, into a very congested area where we might have quite a few of them in a small area, and when I say smaller, we're still talking about a thousand, two thousand acres, but it, it's something I think we need some, we need some thought and some conversation about if, if we decide to go this route, about what exactly, how tight are you making it, because I can say, with, with forty, forty-eight three, one of the big things is, you can restrict it, there are certain things we can do, you can't overly restrict it, you can't make it too difficult to, to develop throughout the, you know, throughout the city of Pittsburgh, so there still needs to be areas where it's allowed, so I guess the conversation, or the important question is, where, where is it best to be allowed, where do you guys see it, where should it be allowed in the city of Pittsburgh?
Industrial and commercial.
So, the only problem with that is, those districts are so small, and those lots are so small, you're effectively, you're, you're effectively outzoning it, which you can't do, so you need area, that, part of the reason why Res Rural was chosen is, aside from the fact that it was a, you know, it was a recommendation from the Commonwealth way back when, when they had their, their solar guidance, was, you want areas where there's large tracts of land, where there's large areas where they can be buffered from residential uses, that's why Res Rural was chosen, I don't know if you guys were on the council, we did the zoning change, but that was part of the zoning change.
And I know we're not here to problem solve everything, we're just trying to gather information about some direction of things, I mean, commercial, to some degree, we only have like five commercial areas, like Park Hill, Twin City, and a couple small ones, John Fitch, where that would be like a parking, like over the parking lot, I don't think we want to see commercial disappear and just turn it. I don't think we want to see commercial disappear and just turn it into a solar field, where this is where you actually have the hub of activity, where you actually have our commercial districts.
Well, actually, I'd like to reference some of the, Henry Haywood Hospital is a good example.
Yes.
Where they have, where they have, in their parking lot-
Right.
You know, they have solar, these large solar arrays.
Right, but it's complementary to that.
And we're doing that at Fitchburg High, by the way.
It's more of an, I'll say it's more of an accessory use than a primary use, because we don't want to say we're going to wipe out all the commercial buildings and just put a solar field in by, you know, there. It's more complementary of, we can put it, it's nice over the disturbed areas of the parking lot, of those huge, those areas to have solar potentially.
You could put them on top of buildings, there are multiple things that you could-
Yes, there is actually, and I think there is not a restriction on top of buildings. And there were also, just to be clear, we, oh, that's the other aspect, are we talk, is the conversation more talking about, is the large ground-mounted solar? Because it wasn't specific to the petition, it just said solar.
No, it's for the large, the large facilities, you know, where you're dealing with thousands of solar panels. This isn't going to affect, you know, a resident putting solar on their house, or, you know, even if they want to put, you know, some solar in the yard, or, that's not what this, this is for the large industrial-sized, you know, solar projects, similar to the Pearl Hill Road Project, what's, Mad River Solar Project, and what's projected at the Oak Hill Project. Those, those large facilities that aren't going to be anything for the residents but a huge eyesore and an issue. There's no, there's no way you can hide a solar field, you know, that large. Try as you might, but it's not going to happen.
The one thing I did want to say, though, because I've heard that before, that it doesn't produce anything for the residents, it does a couple of things. It protects it from development, protects the lots from housing developments, and it's a passive use that requires no city services, water, police, fire, sewer, school systems, none of that. So, but the more important thing is, so I had the assessor pull the tax bills from the eight, there's technically nine, but I don't, I didn't get information on the Unitil site on Sawyer Passway. So the eight privately owned sites, the city's collected $370,764 from those sites in tax revenue. You'd have to cut $370,000 out of the budget if they didn't exist. That's, I mean, I'm sure you guys know, that's monumental, that number would be almost impossible to come by. So there are sizable contributions for some of these, the new pilot for, one of the new projects is $54,000 a year. I have it here somewhere. So, so I mean, we're not talking about small numbers either. So, you know, generally speaking, with, you know, Pearl Hill, I didn't know of issues of Pearl Hill until we started this conversation about six months ago, it's been in existence for three or four years now, I never heard one complaint about the project. I did recently hear about some, about erosion, but to the best of my knowledge, it wasn't a city complaint, it was just an unofficial complaint that someone made about a project. But, you go ahead.
Actually, that Pearl Hill project, I've been getting complaints since, for years, for years, where it's, you know, they have the buffer zone, they, they say they're going to put shrubbery and plants around it, but they're putting plants that need to mature. So it's an eyesore for all the neighbors that are looking at it, because they were under the understanding that it was going to be covered. And I guess what we also have to ask ourselves is, how many are too many? I mean, we can't have the whole city as a solar field, because it, people won't want to come to the city and move here, and people who have moved in these areas and now have solar farms are really upset, because you've just ruined their landscape. So we have to think about the residents as well, the ones who actually have to look at it.
So, so we are duty-bound, in order to do this correctly and legally, to not answer the question, where don't you want it, but to answer the question, where do you want it? Because that's, that's what we have to figure out. There has to be a place in the city that is ample enough that we're not, we're not outzoning it, we're not getting rid of solar, because we are not legally allowed to do that. So the question that we need answered when we get to that point is, where is it going to be? And if it's not Res Rural, it's got to be an alternative other than industrial and commercial, because it's not big enough. I, I'm just, there's, there's no way, adaptive industrial, there are some relatively large parcels when you get to West Fitchburg, the city owns quite a few of them, like the old lagoon site, nothing will happen there. So if they're, if they're protected sites, you're effectively banning it by removing it from places where you can allow it. So, so that's a conversation we have to have of, you know, where is a city, do we, do we see, do we see them most applicably being cited? The other thing that I wanted to mention about the watershed protection, so that watershed protection district's about 2,200 acres, give or take, the city owns about 1,100 of those 2,200 acres. The, some of these steps that other municipalities have taken, particularly out of state, is on watershed land, particularly surrounding reservoirs and things like that, installing large-scale solar farms around city municipal-owned or state-owned pieces of land in order to generate revenue. Someone had mentioned in one of the Concom meetings about, you know, leaching chemicals and problems with that. Without getting too, too far into that, I did some pretty substantial research, and the state has a human health risk assessment that they came up with for PV panels, basically saying that they can, they can cause issues when you dispose of them, but as they exist in a solar array, the, the issues are very minimal. Because even when a panel breaks, they're not usually inoperable for long enough for it to cause any sort of issue. So from, from everything I've read, and, and, you know, we can provide some of those links, Paul and I had a few of them that we were emailing around, what's that?
Nick has his hand up, too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it's, it's, we, like I said, we need to figure out where can they go, because they do need to have a space where they can go. We chose Res Rural, and it wasn't arbitrary, we thought about it at length, and it wasn't just us, the council approved it. I mean, everyone thought about it at length, and we did the zoning change. So I thought everyone was on the same page, but we need to, we need to iron that whole thing out.
Well, I think we can see now the problem that it has become, and I appreciate your argument in regards to the tax base. What is that, the question then becomes, is that more or less than the tax base that we're going to lose based upon the reduction of the value of the houses that surround these solar projects? You know, and we have to take that into consideration, too. And you said 370,000, when we start talking about the citywide budget, that's a drop in the bucket.
Yeah, but you can't, but you can't find $50,000 in cuts to the budget, let alone 370,000.
I agree with you, I agree with you on that point, but, you know, we're talking apples and oranges here.
Yeah.
You know, we're trying to protect our residents from these large solar arrays, that's going to affect their property values, it's going to affect their, their use and enjoyment of their property, and it's-
I don't think it's been demonstrated, though, about the property values, which is not the aspect about that, because we, that argument has perpetually come up about affecting property values.
I've done, I've done the research.
So this is a very large study, if you-
Three to 5% decrease of the, of the value of the properties around solar.
So, so we're talking about something I do for a living, property valuation.
That's okay.
I read that study at length, there was a 300, some odd page, however long it was, there's an incredibly long study.
Yeah, I remember.
They found that it was statistically negligible in Massachusetts, the difference in property values. Now, if you read it, that's exactly what it says, statistically negligible, meaning there was no measurable difference because it was within the margin of error. That was, and that's the largest study that's been done to date. So I suggest everyone read it, because it's, they're very clear, when they talk about Massachusetts, that there is no data that says there's a substantial effect in property values.
Just one of the, I'll just say, one of the categories to be weighed, we just brought that up. Another one would be also just considering undisturbed land versus disturbed land. So if you already have, like, a farm tract of land to be able to do solar with that, in some cases, people need to do that in order to keep the farming and the other aspects alive, to do like a dual-use type of thing. So just thinking about that, if you're thinking about like a categorical type of restriction, about being allowances or things for that, that nature as well, so versus it just being a blanket. So thinking about disturbed versus undisturbed, and I'm also getting the feeling of like water also being an issue, stormwater runoff aspects, too, and also of land clearing, probably land clearing, and maybe even just land clearing, even aside, just not thinking solar, but large tracts of cleared land where we're talking about water runoff types of issues, whether that could be looked at even, you know, separately, with different even zoning ordinance regarding clearing of land.
I think that's where we should focus, too, is-
I'll just say that, because it's like, if that seems to be a problem, then maybe it's not just solar, but maybe looking at it from another angle as well, and that could also work with this.
I think that that's one, one important thing to talk about, too, is, I don't necessarily disagree that cutting down trees, especially in a, you know, large-scale fashion for solar, solar projects, isn't somewhat problematic. That's what can cause sometimes the biggest issues. You had mentioned the Mad River Solar Site. Mad River most likely wouldn't have been an issue had the existing property owner, a relative of the existing property owner, cut down the trees before they were allowed to cut down the trees. That's what happened in Mad River Solar.
Yes.
That was outside the permitting, someone did something at a time they weren't supposed to do it, which we can't control, meaning if someone wanted to go do that now, they could. They took down the trees, they took them down all at once, there were no, you know, stormwater runoff management, no soil erosion controls, none of that, so it caused all sorts of problems. So that was someone doing something they shouldn't have, not necessarily if they followed the plan, you know, would it have happened the same way? Probably not, because we have engineers design these things so that they don't happen that way. So the cutting of trees, I think, is something that we might want to have a conversation about, I don't know how, I mean, we have timber harvesting in our bylaw, how exactly we say what percentage of a site you can cut. I don't even know the answer to the question, but I think that's an important conversation to have.
Just like we looked at earth removal, just, just another aspect of how you look at, like, to manage tracts where it could be problematic for any type of development directionally.
And you have to look, take into consideration, too, and once you take the trees down, what's underneath the trees? Is there ledge there? You know, now there's, I mean, especially in my side of the city, you see the flooding from homes being built on these hills where they've had to blast, or they've taken the trees down, there's no place for water to go, so the person at the bottom of the hill is being flooded out, so that this person up here can put a solar farm in or build a house.
Which they're required to do a stormwater management plan to mitigate that, because they can't have the runoff leave the site, so they have to develop detention basins and other aspects before they do the construction work, to capture that.
It's true, but it doesn't always work out, and it's always the person at the bottom of the hill who's paying the biggest price.
Understood.
Yeah.
You're hearing it on the ground.
You want me to?
And we're going to open this up to public comment.
Why don't we start with Nick?
And Nick's got his hand up, our DPW Commissioner.
Thank you, so that, that's actually a great segue into the topic that I just wanted to bring up to the board. So whenever one of these solar developments comes before planning or conservation, the applicant's required to put together a stormwater analysis. And typically in Fitchburg, and in general in Massachusetts, when these stormwater analyses are prepared, the, the engineer considers the solar panel as pervious area because of the, the land underneath it, being grass or gravel or what, what have you. It's not considered as an impervious surface. But having solar panels, which are in fact impervious, over a pervious surface such as a grass field or a gravel lot, it responds to rainfall a little bit differently than just a completely pervious surface does. So I think that's kind of where Massachusetts is behind the eight ball in terms of regulation, governing how those stormwater analyses are prepared. And one of the states that actually has a modified method for conducting these stormwater analyses is Minnesota. So my, my suggestion to the board was, if possible, perhaps there's some sort of requirement that can be implemented that uses the Minnesota way of conducting these stormwater analyses, which basically gives some credit for the ground underneath solar panels being pervious, but it also doesn't count them as completely pervious areas, which I think is the, the better way to go and will produce more conservative stormwater analysis results, and that will result in more robust stormwater controls for these types of sites. And so I think in turn, that will impact the abutters to these, these projects that, you know, won't, won't necessarily have the same runoff and erosion and flooding issues.
Very good. I think there's mechanisms that can do that within the ordinance itself, or special permit conditions, but could be outlined as a criteria. Thank you, Nick. Is there anyone else in virtual?
Hold on, hold on. I don't see any hands up.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience here who'd like to speak on the matter? Okay, can you just come up to the podium and state your name, someone does have their hand raised online.
Yeah, unless it just happened. Warren Tuscola, 32 Gloria Avenue, and I have a prepared statement, and I came up with a question that I'd like to ask at the end of the statement. The Shea Street Neighborhood Group is a group 260 neighbors strong, and today we stand united in endorsing the proposed solar zoning change put forth by councilors Andrew Kuchar and Marissa Fleming. Our collective support stems from the realization that the current solar array ordinance does not adequately consider the impact of large-scale arrays on abutting RA zones, thereby presenting significant challenges for the city in preserving its current landscape. In our unified stance, we strongly advocate for an amendment to the zoning bylaws for large-scale solar arrays. The inclusion of this provision prevents these developments from abutting our city's residential zoned RA areas. It is our firm belief that the industrial visual aspect and the size of these arrays are fundamentally incompatible with the character of our residential neighborhoods, and offer no benefits to the residents nor to the city of Fitchburg. Furthermore, the city bears the responsibility to safeguard all watersheds. The absence of this protection in our existing zoning places public water supplies at risk, potentially causing harm to our residents. We respectfully request that the planning board unanimously approves the ordinance change presented today. This adjustment is essential in upholding the integrity of the RA-zoned areas and aligning with the objectives of the city's RA zoning. By implementing this change, we feel it strikes a balance between sustainable development and the preservation of our residential landscapes. Thank you for your attention and consideration. My question is, Fitchburg already has a number of solar farms. How many does Fitchburg have to have before their, before the state calls in to question MGL Chapter 48 and says, "No, you still don't have enough, you, you still have to construct more solar farms"? I mean, I think we have more than our fair share already, we have more than some of the communities closer to Boston, for instance, and, you know, I think, I think the Dover Amendment, Chapter 48, needs to be rewritten, because I don't see how solar farms can be included with daycares and churches and schools as far as where they can be built, when much of the benefit that they provide is to the, the companies that, that own them and take in the revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. We have someone else virtual who'd like to speak?
Oh, hold on. Yes, Eileen. It's all yours, Eileen, just-
Okay, yeah, this is Eileen Sheehan, I'm on Stickney Road, I abut the Mad River Project, but also there was mention of all the logging. We've had an unbelievable amount of logging in this area. We had, the Mad River was like 48-acre parcel, there was one on Alpine that was 25 acres, there was, I think, the one that goes from Potato Hill Road in Westminster- There was, I think, the one that goes from Potato Hill Road in Westminster to Westminster Hill Road in Pittsburgh was like 260 acres. And then Jaco logged his properties on Stickney and McIntyre, and we should have some ordinance tied in with this, because they need to log to put the solar panels in, to limit the amount of logging that can be done in a certain zone or area. It's just too much. The animals, we're seeing bobcats and coyotes and everything just much more heavy. It's scary to walk our dogs. And I have land that is in Chapter 61 and should have been logged years ago, but I've held off because everything else around me's been logged. So I just wanted to throw that in there.
Okay. Very valid points.
I just wanted to, just because it's, I can't, I didn't want to make a statement without following it up, and I was trying to find the exact quote from, so the, one of the largest studies, which was recently completed by Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory, stated that, so I'll read the whole thing. "The authors analyzed 1.8 million home sales near solar farms in six states, found diminished property values in Minnesota, 4%, North Carolina, 5.8%, and New Jersey, 5.6%. The three other states, California, Connecticut, and Massachusetts, had price changes that were within the margin of error, which means the price effects were too close to zero to be meaningful." So I just didn't want to throw out that statement without backing it up with something, so that's, and that's another conversation for another day. I just, I kept hearing that, so I just wanted to-
Where it came from?
Kind of give, yeah, exactly. Kind of have a input on that.
I often wonder, the people that do these studies, what's their take? What are, you know, what are they getting from them? Where, you know, are they going to profit from?
To some degree, I mean, I can understand it because of the areas where there's such housing demand and where those prices are skyrocketing no matter what. Just having a house for sale, it's like, you know, and everybody's overbidding one another and that aspect, so you kind of lose sight of other things that may be less desirable impacting it.
You're right, though, Council Fleming, you do have to ask yourself, who does any study? I, you know, I don't know the background of those people, so it's certainly something you can look at. And as, I'll be the first to admit, you can, any study you can find, you can find a counter-study to that.
Counter-study.
So I was reading that one as it was billed as the most recent and the most comprehensive. That's why, that's why I just used the most recent data I had. So I did not actually try and determine specifically if it impacted property values. I have to say that as an appraiser, I didn't do, I didn't do any appraisal, valuation, analysis on that specifically. I was just reading the study.
Let's see if the author of that study has some stock in solar companies.
I hear you. I don't know, so.
Right, and that's like trying to find, it's like, trying to find some evidence about the public health, welfare, and safety, about how, what are those considerations? You know, what do those look like? Because it just seems to be very not tangible to be able to hit whatever bar is necessary. So what is the bar?
And I did want to just say one more thing. The one thing that I started to get at when I started that conversation a little while ago was, aside from the taxes, the reason why I got that was, I wanted to find out if the ones we've already permitted, if they wouldn't have been permitted if this went through. So there were two, four, six, seven permitted. Two of them, well, actually, all of them are right near each. The four of them are on Fisher Road, 225 Industrial Road is the other one, and then the two sunny ones on Ashby State Road on, you can't see them, they're over the hill, 1180 Ashby State Road. So of those eight, seven, or whatever, it's seven, four of them wouldn't have been possible. So 239 and 303 Fisher abut RA, 885 Fisher Road, and that depends on how we treat the neighboring towns, that abuts Res A in Lunenburg, 860 Fisher abuts Res A in Lunenburg, and obviously Mad River Solar abuts Res A. So, and actually, Mad River isn't in those counts because that doesn't technically exist yet.
And I'll just mention, there's plenty of information, and as this progresses, we'll provide any information that's necessary, could be helpful in that regard. So just my, so my initial thought, so we're here, whether or not there's any further public comment? Is there any? Yes, the audience here?
We get a hand raised too when this is done?
Great.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Pittsburgh Planning Board. I appreciate this opportunity to speak. My name is Clayton Raymond. I live on 559 Shea Street. I'm a longtime resident of Pittsburgh. I would like to take this opportunity to say I am in favor of Councilor Kuchar's and Councilor Fleming's petition to restrict solar arrays in rural residential neighborhoods as it relates to the well-being of the city's residential areas. I appreciate the Commissioner's rebuttal of the tax revenue being produced by these solar farms, but it, you know, I think that it's $370,000, but you've got to consider the price we're paying for this to be in our neighborhoods. I mean, shall we all move out and just cover the city with arrays and have the power grid drop, you know, a direct deposit to the city funds and don't need any schools or fire? So I do not see any value in chopping down trees that have grown for 50 years for a solar array that will last maybe 15 years. That only gives you power during the sunlight hours on a sunny day. So I am adamantly opposed to having solar arrays in the direct vision of residential neighborhoods. I am not against solar power. It just, it has a place, and it's not in my neighborhood. Thank you very much. I appreciate this opportunity to speak.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We have a hand raised in the audience.
All right. We haven't.
Carrie, you're welcome to speak. You just hit the microphone button.
Hi, my name is Carrie Monk. I live on Lee Ave, and I wasn't actually prepared to comment, but I heard a couple of items that I did want to comment on. First and foremost, I do support the petition being put forth. I do think that we do need a change, and I further support the group statement that was read also by the Shea Street Group. I am a part of that group. I did want to comment on, there was a discussion in regards to the homes and the, what the value was happening. I do want to point out a different study that was not brought up, but was by the University of Rhode Island. It was published in September 2020, and it has over 400,000 homes in the Massachusetts and Connecticut area, I'm sorry, Massachusetts and Rhode Island area only. So that is another study to take in consideration. They talk more along the lines of 7% loss in value within a third mile of the area. And I also have the same question, how many solar sites are too many? We have very high water tables in Pittsburgh. We have different watersheds we need to protect as well. So I would appreciate consideration by the, by the board in approving this petition. That's all I have.
Mentioned in the restriction of number of, or type, we have, as you're aware, there's a cap on retail marijuana facilities at eight. That is in the city code, and that's where it's there to be potentially changed versus changing the zoning ordinance, where there's a cap on a particular use, just saying that there's a, maybe another mechanism out there, looking at that aspect.
And I mean, the short answer too is, we can, I mean, if the council decides to pose any zoning change, you can word it however you want. The AG's going to vet it, and they're going to decide if we can do it. So, I mean, I suppose you write it the way you want to write it, however the council sees it as most palatable, because the council don't, I don't want to kid anyone here, the plaintiff has zero say in this. The council has all of the say in this. So whatever the council decides, you draw it up however you want to draw it up, whatever gets the, you know, I think there's a two-thirds vote, Paul and I were talking about this before. It used to be a two-thirds vote, but we both thought, we remembered a recent change where it's now a simple majority for zoning changes, but I'm not certain of that, and I don't want to throw that out there because it's not our board anyway. But either way, whatever you need to approve it, and then it gets sent off to AGs, and they just determine if it's okay or not. So you can figure it out that way. You draw it the way you want to draw it, and then see what happens. So.
Yes, another aspect, I've mentioned, direct view of residential neighborhoods, but there's also residential, when we mentioned industrial zones that runs through the heart of the city, that's also in RC, in like very in view of other residences as well. So just another aspect of, there's more than real residential in view as well, so what other, I don't see barriers, buffers, or anything like that.
You know, it's interesting that I find people that are not opposed to these solar farms are not opposed to them till someone says, "I want to put one next to you." And then their attitude, you know, then their tune changes, so.
See, I think, Council Fleming, I think personally, I think it's a very passive use. There's, aside from, like I said, I think the right way to approach this is, is it okay to take down that many trees? I think that's a good question to have, because that can be problematic. Now granted, these people don't own the trees they're looking at, so that's something you have to take into account. But aside from that, I think that's a valid conversation to have. How many trees can you take down when you're doing a solar field? I think you should focus on that. As far as, are they aesthetically unappealing? I don't, I've, so Council Boishman and I, because when we started, when we, Shea Street came, Oak Hill Road came up originally, he said to me, "Well, how many are there in Pittsburgh?" I said, "Oh, there's about eight." He said, "Oh, I don't think I've seen," you know, so I took him, we drove around, we went to every single one of them. Three-quarters of them, actually almost all of them, except for Fisher Road, the one on the old apple orchard, the Laney Apple Orchard, with the exception of that property, almost all of them, you don't know that you're, that they're there unless you're a direct abuter, or unless they're problematic. We stopped and we've talked, we talked to some of the abutters, the one that they did on Bean Porridge and Potato Hill in Westminster, which is relatively large-scale, and they took down entire, the whole thing was trees before that existed. We talked to some of the people around there, and there was, there was no outrage, there was no, and I'm not saying that there shouldn't be in some cases, there are some sites that are problematic, but that's what we have special permits for. Special permits aren't allowed by right, they're allowed if you prove it to be okay. So, you know, again, I think it's, I don't disagree that some people see them as aesthetically unappealing. I don't personally understand that, but, you know, if you're saying, would you rather look at a tree or a solar panel? Yeah, I'd rather look at a tree, but I also don't own those trees. So, you know, that's something that we, there's private property rights at stake here too. You know, we create zoning bylaws so that individuals, if they follow the letter of the law, they can do certain things on their land, build, you know, build a house, or, you know. Now, solar fields aren't allowed by right, they're special permit, which isn't, you can do it automatically, it's you have to fall into, you have to do it the right way in order to do it. There's still a method to do that. So property owners, by owning property, they, if they, they say, "Okay, we have a zoning bylaw." The zoning bylaw is the book of the things we can do. So I do, I do understand and I appreciate that if we want these things to not exist certain places, we have to change the zoning bylaw, but at the same time, they have to exist somewhere. We need to determine where. That's, I keep going back to that, but it's a very important question. We need to figure out where they can go.
So I guess we'll be looking to advance this to the Back to City Council Legislative Affairs on that. What's very, very clear, I really don't have any issue with this, it's like nor shall allow about any RA, and I know R2, I think you meant RB.
Yep.
It just puts another, like, and we can, that can be depicted on a map, just like another band around more dense areas, view of that. So that's kind of like, so that still, that still leaves other aspects in place.
Just so Liz's work doesn't go unpublished, I'm going to pull up the map she sent to me, which, which is great. So this is, so these dots are all the lots that abut Res A and Res B. Let me see if I can zoom in a little bit here. Hold on one second. For some reason, it always opens in Google Docs, and I got to open it elsewhere. Hold on.
We could have just did a map that just did those RA and RB, showed RA and-
So, yeah, so obviously the dots are where they now would not be allowed. Obviously, these small parcels are inconsequential, because no one's going to put a large-scale solar array on a half-acre parcel of land. It's the larger parcels, and obviously, some of these, like, like this one right here is either North County Land Trust or Mass Autobahn, that's the area behind Burbank.
Oh, yeah.
So some of them wouldn't be developed anyway, but this kind of gives you an idea of the north side, and then the south side, which she wrote in here. Bear with me for one second. So Pittsburgh is this one. So this is kind of the other side, so the dots would be where Res Rural abuts, in this case, it's a little patch of RB, and then this is the RA Shea area, Oak Hill, here's the country clip here, so all the dots would be parcels where they abut RA and RB, so. And that might not, actually, it looks like it doesn't encompass exactly everyone, because there's a couple here that should be in there, and then these ones all along here. But anyway, just to give you an idea. So we will need, if you decide to, you know, make that concrete, that you don't want it where the lots abut RA or RB, we'll kind of need to show an overlay map of what that would look like, all the parcels that that would include and exclude. And then you might find, if you look at that, that might not be, you know, you know, a certain parcel that you wouldn't want solar on, isn't protected in that case. So you'd have to, you know, take a good look at that when we get to that point.
Does any board member have anything on this petition? So our-
I think, I think the petition that has been brought forward by Councilor Kuchar and Councilor Fleming certainly has, you know, a lot of merit, and I think it's very honorable to try to protect the rural and residential areas of the city. I think the petition is, it's very reasonable and very appropriate. Another way to look at the whole situation might be to evaluate each project on its own merits, regardless of where it's going to go. I know this project in the Shea Street neighborhood has got an awful lot of opposition to it, and maybe that kind of opposition wouldn't be there in another rural residential area. So, you know, maybe we don't want to restrict it everywhere like that. But I do look at these projects in a, you know, in a little bit different light. You know, one of the things that I really kind of focus on is quality of life, and in that neighborhood right there, you're certainly going to affect the quality of life of an awful lot of people. And to me, it's not just a matter of taking down trees. You know, taking down trees, as far as I'm concerned, is the last thing you want to do for any kind of a project. Trees are a natural resource, they protect habitat, they filter toxins out of the air and the water, they have a cooling effect on the environment, they're very, very important to have there. I think solar developments are great on highways, over parking lots, on rooftops, but I have a lot of trouble with taking down acres of trees to put up a solar array. And in my view, my personal view, is they're darn ugly. Some people might say they don't have any effect. I think they're ugly. One has to just drive down Airport Road in Pittsburgh and look over the tracks at that god-awfully array on the left, or drive down Route 2 at those beautiful rolling hills now covered with solar panels, and they're like, my God, who would do that? So, you know, each project has its own merit, and I think this Shea Street one has got so much opposition, just on its own, it might not fly.
Just to follow up on Pete's thing, he says, "Who would do that?" The person who owns the property. And I think that's, you know, you own property for reasons, you should be able to do what you want to do within right. So, you know, that's where I am on that.
And I will say, in answering, not answering, but referencing what Peter just said, take them on a case-by-case basis, that's exactly what our current bylaw does. It's not, it's not allowed by right, it's a special permit, and we made it a special- And we made it a special permit for a reason. Matter of fact, when we created the zoning ordinance, when we had these conversations, one of the things that the Commonwealth was pushing is to make it allowed by right, make it site planned, which the first couple, we had to do because we didn't have a bylaw for the first couple that, that existed. I don't remember if Fisher was site planned, but, but anyway. Some of them were allowed by right because we didn't have an ordinance, we created the ordinance, we purposely made it special permit so that we, we do have the ability to say, "Okay, these are certain things that can be done on certain sites, and these are things that can't be on other sites." We permitted at least six or seven of them. Like I said, I think there were one or two that were allowed by right. We permitted at least probably six of them. I don't know that I remember, other than Fisher Road, there were, there were a couple neighbors for Fisher Road that I remember. I don't remember any neighbors for any of them complaining substantially, meaning there was, there was no pushback. Fisher, 239 Fisher, there were, there were probably a half dozen, maybe, abutters. The direct abutters, we actually went out of our way to get the direct abutters to respond. Ark owns two properties there, and then someone else has a direct abutter, didn't, couldn't even get a response. So we, we've had very little pushback. Obviously, I've been following the Shea thing very closely with Concom and everything else, and that's a much different animal. But, but, but I think so far, that's more the outlier than the other ones were. I mean, even Matt River, when we approved Matt River, I don't remember more than one or two people that were there that had anything substantial to say about it.
Although I agree with you, Mr. Vice Chair, seeing the, and I, and I understand the disaster arose because people did what they were not supposed to do at the, they, they did what they did at the wrong time, okay? But now, the public sees what can happen, the public, their eyes are open, and going forward, I'm damn sure you're going to see more people stand up and say, "Uh, no more." And I think going forward, you're going to see a lot of pushback from our residents in regards to these large-scale solar arrays.
I do think at the very least, it's a good conversation to have.
It is, it is, again, it all rests with the council of where you want to see it to go into the community. We carry out those aspects of it, of what's been granted, you know, authorized. So if there's, you can take a look, if there's ground-mounted zoning ordinance now that needs to be updated and to, and changed to reflect the times, or then that's where you need to go with tables. So there's, so there's aspects to look at, there's the watershed protection overlay in the zoning ordinance piece, there is the table of uses, there is the, I know I just mentioned the ground-mounted solar, all this, there's a lot of criteria in there that could also be, you know, looked at in a different manner, or tightened up, or add new things or criteria to that when granting a special permit, aside from looking at it just notice certain zones, you can look at it of more pointedly.
As far as what's requested of this board, it's, it's just, at this point, it's just, should it proceed?
Yeah.
I think that any conversation about zoning change should happen. It's a good conversation to have, at the very least. It, it, you know, it, it allows us to get a feel for what's important to, to the constituents, to the councilors, to, you know, everything else. It's a conversation that's worth having. I would never turn, really, any opportunity to have a conversation about changing zoning away. And, you know, we'll see what, if, if Legislative Affairs and the, and the council decide to proceed with some sort of zoning change, that's where the rubber will meet the road. As far as, it'll have to be specific as to what the language is, what it's going to encompass, and then we can have a real conversation about what parts of that make sense, what parts of that don't make sense. And I think that I, I'm ready to make a motion to recommend to Legislative Affairs that if they so choose, they're welcome to proceed with the potential zoning change, or looking into the potential zoning change.
Second, motion's made with the second. All those, I'm going to take roll call, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say opposed. Alex?
Opposed.
Opposed for moving it forward? Okay.
Yeah.
Allyn?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much for answering questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor.
Yes, appreciate you coming this evening. We have other business this evening, we have, on other business, we have a preliminary subdivision plan for Zero Ashburnham Street, Phillips Brook Estate submitted by Arthur Ethball.
Yes, hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Whoa, let me pull up, let me pull up the revised plan, or the new, I should say preliminary plan. All right. And Arthur, if you need, as we go through with this, if you need to zoom in on certain spots, just mention it, I'll get whatever you need up there.
Sure thing, thank you. Well, good evening, happy to, happy to be here, and want to introduce you to our land. This is 74 acres, it's along Ashburnham Street, it's actually really a beautiful piece of land. My father built it back in 1972, and it's been in our family since then. The bottom line, if you will, is that I'm proposing and wanted to present to you a preliminary proposal to create 24 lots here. And it is RA1 zoning. And in actuality, three of the lots actually sit right on Ashburnham Street itself, we have several lengths of road frontage on Ashburnham Street.
So we're talking about this one here on the far southerly side, and then these two here on the northerly side?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, is it north, north and south, or east, anyway?
Yeah, yeah, it's, and there is more road frontage, but we're not building on it. If you see going right down, we, we, our land is on both sides for quite a while of Phillips Brook. Phillips Brook is really a, it's really a beautiful area there. And it's sort of in a miniature valley, if you will. And Matt, may I get up and just approach the map? So really what, what we set out to do is, we want to leave the, I'm going to consider it the western side, I guess it's really the northwestern side, but the area along Phillips Brook, we want to keep that really the way it is. So we're only proposing in what would be the eastern side, and focusing it on the eastern side of the land, with the intention of really keeping the area along Phillips Brook and that area in its, in its natural state. So we have a horseshoe-type road entering on Ashburnham Street and then exiting on Ashburnham Street as well. It goes over, really was rolling terrain, it's not completely flat like part of it, it's really sort of gently rolling. Part of this was an old farm, and part of it is forested, and this shows it in its natural existing state being, this is not any proposed changes, this is just showing where this would reside. It's, to point out, there is some of the area, the, what I would say the drainage basin of Phillips Brook, does come in, and so that chunk of land there, if you will, we're not proposing to build on. And when we get further in depth and do the, you know, very exacting studies between now and the final, we'll find out exactly what's in there, there may be some areas that we will exclude as part of that. All right? But this goes behind the existing homes, if we look at Ashburnham Street, the area from our first entrance, the most easterly entrance to our exit, there are existing homes there, we have neighbors in there. And in its current state right now, we have, there are no buildings of any sort, there are some old foundations, again, it was a farm way back when, in fact, there's a barn foundation right along Ashburnham Street there. And that is an overview of where we are. We've thought long and hard, hard about this, so in other words, we've been, been working on this for some time and happy to propose it.
Thank you.
Our intention as, you know, what type of home? We're, we're really looking for family homes here, we're not looking for 4,000, 5,000 square-foot homes, we're looking for 2,000 square-foot homes, things of this sort, you know, great, yeah, great shot. And really, that would create a neighborhood in the area. It's very rural right now, anyone that knows that area, headed towards, the Westminster border is right there, but then in a couple miles, we're in Ashburnham. So it's, it's, it's very rural, very rural New England.
So, Arthur, just to give everyone an idea on the aerial, just because Stigney doesn't show up on that preliminary plan, you come in right here, right?
Yes.
After Morne Field?
Yes.
And you loop around and you come back right after Stigney Road, right here?
It's further to the northwest, quite a bit further to the northwest.
Oh, it's over here?
Keep going.
No, it's not further than that?
Yes, it's around that, last one.
So right there, yes, right where your cursor, I'm sorry.
Put your cursor a little lower.
Yeah, right there, that's where it would exit.
Okay. Oh, yeah, it's much, yeah, it's much further than I thought.
And the large field there, actually still a large field right in the center, the farm, the barn is on one part, but part of that was a part of an old farm years and years and years ago.
Is that the, does the field, like you said, to the northwest, is an area there that looks, well, on the topo, that, not, yeah, there, the cleared land to the left.
Talking about here?
Yes.
There's nothing, there's nothing proposed out there, right? You must just use that for ATVs?
It's going to go, it looks like it's going to be, go through part of it.
Oh, okay.
There, so, it's actually, we, we've allowed people, our neighbor on this end, I don't know if he's here tonight, used to, used to ride horses in there, she's right here, and used to ride horses years ago.
Yeah.
Some neighbors come and do hike it, ATV, if anybody...
Yeah, you can see, when I zoom in, you can see all the trails.
Anybody does any fishing in there, we get half their dinner.
Nice, perfect.
So there's native brook trout in Phillips Brook. Phillips Brook is really actually a gorgeous, just a gorgeous little area.
I just want to explain to folks, this is a preliminary subdivision. This is different from a special permit process. So there are inherent rights with the preliminary, like a by-right subdivision. There's, so we have our subdivision rules and regulations. As long as the applicant complies with that, it's pretty much a by-right type of project. It has, it's a preliminary subdivision, this is why it's not a hearing, so that's why there's been pretty much no notification to abutters as was traditional, that when we actually have the, when the board actually works, when the applicant submits a definitive subdivision plan, then that will be the hearing process. This is preliminary to kind of get feedback. The board can, I'll mention this too, it's in the rules and regs, may give preliminary plan approval with or without modification. Such approval does not, let's see, such approval, da-da-da, does not facilitate the subdivision, the procedure, and securing final site of the subdivision plan. The plan, planning board may disapprove the plan as well. The disapproval shall not be, shall be accompanied by a statement for reasons of the, for the action. So we can approve it, or approve with modification, or disapprove it, but it really, in the end, has no bearing. It's more of just getting feedback at this point, preliminary stages, but also it preserves certain rights to a developer on the land when they submit a preliminary within a certain timeframe, it's cert, it like freezes certain types of zoning applications as well. So it doesn't have a potential advantage if there's going to be changes in the rules or regulations to that effect statewide as well for that. So I just wanted to explain why, if people may say, "I didn't hear about this, what's going to be happening," I just wanted to put that out there about, it wasn't advertised in the newspaper or notices sent out, because we're not at that stage yet.
It's information collecting at this point. Well, to elaborate on what Paula was saying, these lots theoretically, or at least with the preliminary plan and presumably with the definitive plan, they meet the minimum lot size and frontage requirements for the zoning district, with the creation of the road, which certainly has to fall within the, the correct construction and methodology for, you know, building a road and stormwater management and all these sorts of things that we're going to talk about as part of the permit approval. Once the road is in, and as part of the approval, it's, 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 it's what's called a conventional subdivision. It's, it's allowed by right if it falls within the parameters of our zoning bylaw. So what Paula said, I just want to go a step further.
I did just want to mention to the applicant that the, the legend on the front of the slide was incorrect as to the lot size aspect.
Okay.
It said one, it's 100 feet for the frontage, and I think it said 150, just so on your...
I'll make sure to correct that.
...plan, and also it's, would be, is it RA, not R1? We don't have a R1 district.
Oh, yes.
I don't know, maybe we should just back go to numbers, because it seems to be like R1 and B2.
I can tell you, looking at zoning ordinance is all day long for work, I can tell you, no town is the same. There's RRF, RA1, R80, they're all over the place, so.
And then I had just a comment on slide, slide, I would say it's slide seven, but it has to do with the, the lots at the entrance.
Yes.
One, I'll say, I think, was it lot 20, might be 24. The very last one is actually, I'll just say, it's fronting right on Ashburnham Street, so it really isn't even, I'll say, part of the subdivision. It's a pretty much an A&R by-right lot, you don't need any approval here.
But you save yourself a step of having to draw an A&R plan if you include it in the, but you can include it in the definitive plan instead of doing an A&R.
True, but then you're subject to bond, everything else in the project is making part of the subdivision.
No, 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 I know, and what I'm saying is, you can legally do it that way and save yourself a step of drawing an A&R plan. But yes, it's part, it would be part of the project as, as a whole.
Well, yes, but it's going to be subject to all of any other types of, in the development, versus it being singled out. I'll just mention that.
I'm sure he's aware of that.
Sure, thank you.
And I think also the lot, so then there's the building, abutting it, what lot is that?
One, this one, lot one?
Twenty-four.
So 24 is this one?
Yeah.
This is lot one?
So, and I think that, I would say, that should be oriented to face Ashburnham Street, and the driveway come off of the road, but it should face Ashburnham Street as the frontage is on Ashburnham Street, not see the side of the building, so it's running.
You do driveway off the side of the street?
You can driveway can come off, be safer, the driveway to come off of the new, of the, the new road versus there, but the frontage that we viewed.
Yes, Roger, we'll do, we'll make that change.
I see what you're saying, because you don't want the side of a building on the main street, yeah.
Right, yeah. And it's, yeah, and that's especially also where it's getting its frontage from, too. So it's, it is fronting on Ashburnham Street.
I'll, I'll make that correction.
And then you had, let's see, right. You, there was a request for some waivers on the impact statement.
There are...
You were looking for feedback on that?
Yes, and really, what we were requesting is to, or proposing is to build a sidewalk on one side of the road, but not both sides of the road. I, in our estimation, it goes with the area, meaning it's not a heavily developed suburban area, it's, it's really a, a country fight, if you will, still in its, very much a country setting. So a full-size sidewalk, as prescribed by the ordinance, on one side would be sufficient instead of actually on both sides.
It's not an unusual request that we've seen.
It's overkill to have extra impervious area on both sides.
The board has looked at reducing a sidewalk to one side, but then they've also said, looked at, well, whatever it was for the other side, maybe contribute to a sidewalk fund aspect in that regard. And then also understanding, there is also, I think, a grass strip piece of trees, so it's also maybe, at least it's still keeping with, if not a sidewalk, grass strip with trees.
Oh, sure, alongside the, the proposed street.
Right.
Sure, yeah, yes, very good.
With the street trees. And then there was also requests for waiving of the granite curbing. I guess you can ask.
What do we think about that?
So it has been, from, from recommendations from DPW, and I, I was going to say, I don't even have to look, because I see two participants in the race. I would say, I would say generally speaking, we haven't been in favor of waiving that, especially, you know, you know, especially if we're doing, you know, a reduction in the sidewalk, I think the... I think the, I think that I personally wouldn't be in favor of getting rid of granite curbing, particularly because it's so important to, to increase the life of the sidewalk and the roads, especially, you know, even, even if we do, you know, if we do granite curbing, I, I, I think it's possible that you could do asphalt sidewalk. I'm not saying it's okay. I'm just saying the granite curbing can protect that even if it's something like asphalt sidewalk, so.
Right.
I'll defer to Nick. He's, let, I'll let him speak because I'm sure he's got something to say about that.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to use the Tibet Circle development as an example here. So you have vertical curbing, then you have the grass strip, then you have the sidewalk, and then you have trees planted immediately behind the sidewalk, and then you have the edge of the right of way where the property becomes private. So a couple of, couple of concerns that I have with this kind of configuration. So the grass strip between the curbing and the sidewalk never survives. It always turns into weeds and gets killed off by any salt that we put down in the wintertime. So that's, that's an issue. And anytime you have trees in close proximity to the sidewalk, you end up with root issues after 10 to 15 years where the sidewalk panels start buckling. You know, the trees become overgrown. So DPW, you know, 20 years after a development goes in, ends up dealing with excessive weed growth within the right of way between the curbing and the sidewalk. We deal with trees becoming too large and unruly to deal with adjacent to the sidewalk, and then we deal with the sidewalk being destroyed by the root balls of these trees. So, and I'm just kind of thinking out loud here, but as far as longevity goes, I think ideally what DPW would like to see is vertical granite curbing with a concrete sidewalk immediately adjacent to that curbing with no grass strip, and then trees planted five feet offset from the property line, the edge of the right of way, private property, into the private property such that trees become the ownership of the private property owners and not a liability for the city. And that way, that separation prevents the, the root balls from those trees impacting the actual sidewalk and all that. So as far as like a, a long, long-term durability standpoint goes, that's what I would prefer to see, but I don't think that meshes very well with what our subdivision requirements state. So, you know, certainly willing to be flexible, but those are some of my preliminary thoughts here.
Okay.
So I, I actually understand that point, that trees planted in, you know, a strip the size of this table, when, when they're infant trees, they're fine as they grow and so forth, they become an issue. I understand that and, and actually concur with everything that was just said. So we absolutely can plant trees and put them on the new lots, if you will, close to the road, if that's what I understand what Nick was saying, and put them close to the road. So they're, they're in the yard, they're, they're both decorative as well as environmentally sound right there, but they're not interfering with the long-term duration of the sidewalk, if you will.
Really?
So I, I would prefer trees to be not within the city's, you know, proposed, so I assume that this road is going to be eventually taken over by the city as a public right-of-way. So I would prefer that no trees are planted within what's intended to be taken over as the city right-of-way, and instead they're moved just inside the property line of private property. What we've noticed is that trees planted right on the property line eventually become overgrown and diseased and to die off essentially, and then the city's responsible for them because they're right on that property line. If they're within the city's right-of-way, the impact, the sidewalk and the right-of-way pavement, et cetera. So that's the reason why I'd prefer them to be on private property and set back at least five feet or so from that property line. So that, that's, that's what we're talking about with regards to trees. Sidewalk, again, I, I don't really like the, the five-foot grass strip between the sidewalk and the curbing because it inevitably becomes a bed of weeds that the city is liable to maintain and trim and all that. Some owner, homeowners take care of that little stretch of, of land between their property line and the actual edge of pave, but some homeowners decide to not take care of that little stretch of land and then push it back on the city. And that becomes a, a maintenance challenge for us to deal with long-term.
I know.
So I guess it suddenly depends on whether we intend to, to take this on as a public right-of-way or if it is intended to remain a, a private road with a, an HOA or something like that.
Well, it's, since it's a by right subdivision, it's, it's going to be a public road.
Council still has to accept it, though.
Yes, but it has to be constructed to a public road.
Yep.
Because it's being developed in that fashion. It's not a, it's not a planned unit development or a private condominium development. So I know, I, I understand the aspects Nick is bringing up about like that practicality, but also it's right, I mean, the city does have an obligation about planning and maintaining street trees, whether it be Main Street or, or other areas as well. So we have to kind of figure something out because that, having it just on private property kind of defeats the purpose in some cases of maintaining that, that, the trees.
You're saying, what if they cut down the tree?
Exactly. It's up to the private property owner where.
But at the same time, at the same time, I think that that's a good compromise because A, we know that no city staff has the time or ability to maintain them, and B, even if they're, even if they are installed within the right-of-way, they're too close to the sidewalk where they're just going to disrupt the sidewalk when they get larger anyway. So I, I, I think we're talking about two of these smaller issues.
Well, that's only if the applicant is willing to do that because we can't have him, we can't force them to put it on the private.
Well, no, you can as part of the definitive subdivision approval process. We've done that before where you say, just don't, you know, don't put it with.
This do that.
So, yeah, so, so I, I think that, I'm going to go out on a limb here, say Mr. Ebertholz, you probably agree with this, that if we were to say the tree is to be installed at least five feet from the right-of-way on private property, you have no problem with that. Perfect. So those two, I think, the reason why I'm pushing this along, those two are the smallest of issues, that the, the larger issue is, you know, we have to have a conversation about, you know, I, I think that we generally want to defer to the DPW because they know better than we do when it comes to city stuff. So when we're talking about granite curbing and concrete sidewalks, I would like to defer to them. I think the granite curbing is, is.
Necessary.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's unnegotiable. I'd like to think the same of the concrete sidewalks unless it makes the project somehow infeasible, which I can't imagine one sidewalk does.
No, and just, you know, in that regard, if, if we're just putting sidewalks on then one side of the proposed street, then I think a concrete sidewalk and granite curbing is feasible.
Great, that'd be fantastic. I mean, aside from.
One thing I also wanted to mention too, is as far as water sewer utility connections go, I, I strongly recommend that you reach out to the Water Division and the Wastewater Division to just make sure, if you're planning on water sewer connections, that those are, are both feasible. I'm not sure if you're planning that or well in septic, but certainly something to consider when you're, you're putting together your design plans.
Yes, we're planning that, so definitely will, definitely will.
Right, whether they're pump-up systems or for the gravity or the gravity or.
Right, right, yes.
What's necessary. I know you've got like a intermittent stream crossing issue to deal with, with ConCom and, yep, what that's going to result in.
I mean, I mean, as far as, you know, the, the rest of the stuff, there's going to be stuff that's going to be vetted as we get closer to, you know, once we see the definitive plan, some of the specifics about house locations and some of that, I should say most of that is probably going to be per view of ConCom, you know, where you could put things in relation to, you know, resource areas and whatever else you have. Obviously, you know, to look over stormwater management and all that sort of stuff. Are there, do we know yet? Have, they, they probably haven't gotten into the level yet of detention basins or anything like that.
No, we have proposed sites for them, but we haven't gotten deeper as to what volume we're looking at and so forth, what would be the offset.
I think I mentioned to you when we met before that if, if, when we get to that point, aside from, you know, looking at where they are and everything else, that you'll need an operation and maintenance plan for that. It'll have to be recorded, we'll have to figure out. So with definitive subdivisions, I don't know what the fee is off the top of my head. I want to say it's $750 a lot for contributions to the maintenance of detention basins.
It was 500.
500, whatever the number is, yeah.
We, we were tracking 500, but yes, and, and you had mentioned that already, so we actually sort of input that into the math.
Yeah, whatever, whatever the number was, it, I know we, we actually just went through the, the issue with.
DPW with INI, inflow and infiltration as well.
Yes, yes.
These, what else? Utility poles, of course, hydrants, any streetlights lighting.
We talked about, did we talk about underground electric for the whole project, correct?
We did, yes.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Ward 2 council will be happy about that.
And actually, that kind of keeps with, I mean, our intention is, is to go with the terrain, not against it. So, you know, that sort of fits what we wanted to do in there, is put the telephone utilities or utility poles underground, roadside underground.
As a preliminary heads up, that has nothing to do with the planning board whatsoever, but I will tell you because I've heard about it on numerous occasions so far, just be cautious about when you start ordering things for your, particularly for the underground electric because we have several projects that said they're a year and a half out from getting the transformers that they need for underground electric service.
Thank you on that. I don't, this market, I don't doubt that at all.
It's, it's, yeah, it's, it's a shortage of that particular, creating that particular transformer apparently.
Right.
So anyway, just an aside.
But is it, it'd be great, these 2,000 square foot or so, single-family homes are going to serve a need in our housing.
Yes, yes, exactly. And that's what we thought, and it's a great use for that setting. It's going to be a great little street to, to grow up on.
We, we have not seen.
Subdivision.
Subdivisions in quite a while. It's, it's, it's nice to see in exchange for what we normally see, you know, high-density condo complexes and things like that. I think a single-family housing development is fantastic.
But we haven't seen these in a while.
We do have a hand raised, I don't know if you want to take public comment, but we have a virtual hand raise.
Okay. It is, if this is not a hearing, so we, but out of, out of, since we're getting some feedback, who, is there?
Yep, it's Eileen Shin. Go ahead, Eileen.
Eileen, yes, you have.
Okay, yes, me again. I'm on Stickney Road and I have property involved with this also that has been designated by the State of Massachusetts on their biomap as core habitat and critical natural landscape.
Okay.
And I don't know if the state gets involved, but the biomap guides strategic protection and stewardship of lands and waters that are most important for conserving biological diversity in Massachusetts. The biomap uses the latest scientific data and resources to help state and local governments, land trusts, non-government organizations, and other conservation partners strategically plan projects to conserve wildlife in their habitats. The latest version combines more than 40 years of rigorously documented rare species and natural community records from mass wildlife and cutting-edge climate resilience data from the Nature Conservatory and spatial data identifying intact fish and wildlife communities, habitats, and ecosystems that are the focus of the Massachusetts State Wildlife Action Plan.
Okay.
So it sounds, I mean.
It might be proximate to the, to this location.
It's, it's all of it.
So, so that'll be a ConCom issue, not a planning board issue.
So that, and whether or not the state be, sometimes it depends what size of the development is, if it treat, if it trips CalMepha thresholds for, for environmental impacts that they'll have to comply with that. But that's good for bringing, for bringing that up because we want to make sure like, you know.
The biomap runs pretty close to Ashburnham Street and goes way back. It covers all that Phillips Brook area and the surrounding areas.
Okay. So that everybody's aware of that, how it factors in. Yes, council.
Hi, thank you, Andrew Kuchar, Ward 3 City Counselor. You know, I believe, if my history is correct, I believe this was a housing project with 70 houses was proposed about a, maybe 15 years ago roughly, and it was determined that they could not do it based upon, I believe, the, it was determined to be a flood plain. Secondly, you know, what is it about my ward? Why the hell is everybody coming, every Tom, Dick, and Harry coming in, wanting to rip up trees and destroy the natural beauty of my ward to put in, you know, cram everything in as much as possible? You know, it's kind of frustrating.
This is a regular housing development. This isn't cramming anything. This is a normal, this, lots for this housing development are bigger than a lot of lots exist in Ward 3.
I, I, I understand, and I understand private property rights. You know, being an attorney, I completely understand that, but it just seems like you guys are so busy and ConCom is, is so busy and just, just alone in my ward. So it's kind of frustrating.
This is a lot of land. I'll say this is a light night and we've had in some cases like 10 to, 10 to 12 hearings on development, commercial and residential and otherwise and redevelopment and.
I, I understand.
There's a lot of activity happening.
But, you know, I'm, I'm going to be watching this, this project with great interest. I don't know if it's going to be able to happen. I'm not going to say I'm for it, but I'm going to be watching it to see exactly what happens, so I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just as long as everyone understands that the board cannot be against.
So this is not, I'll just say.
I said, just so that everyone understands, the board cannot be against a project that meets our zoning bylaw.
So in this case, this is, this is a by right project. We can help shape it according to what the subdivision rules are, but we can't prevent it. So what happens typically is on a preliminary as well, once they start, once an applicant starts looking into other aspects, you'll see the plan start to change and form as well, based upon looking at other environmental and other concerns as well.
Arthur, was there, so I do remember we had a preliminary plan on this property, if you look at the GIS, the one that's behind Casia Drive. We had a large-scale project on that property, which isn't the property we're talking about. Did you, did we ever propose anything on your property in the past? I remember conversations about a concept plan, but I thought it was similar to what was in front of us today.
Yes, very similar. So in fact, to be precise, 15 years ago, I was in Afghanistan and I'm the owner of this land. My father was the owner before me and he passed away in 1986, so no plan was presented for 70 lots, no. And we did several different times. I spent a career in the Army, I spent 33 years in the Army, and I'm, I'm, I'm actually home now. In 2001, March of 2001, I brought forward a concept plan and for 35 lots. 9/11 happened several months later, I ended up leaving and was, was away for several years, never did anything further. I did submit the concept plan to the board, but again, then left and I, it was my issue. I had no more contact with the board after that. I came back and resubmitted in 2007, and I want to say it was slightly less than that. I want to say it was 34 lots at that time. And about 25 days after I submitted that plan, I ended up being sent to Afghanistan and then, once again, no fault of the board, of this board, I had no contact with the board. I returned briefly and then was gone again. This is my first, my first opportunity to really engage with the board since 1986 when I, my father passed away in June 1986 and I became the owner here. I went through the probate process and I, I bought it from my family, so to speak. So this is really the first time I'm coming in front of you with this. I did attempt to get, again, a similar in overall concept. We always wanted to keep the western side of the river just in its natural state, but it was 35 lots and then it was slightly less, 34 by memory. This now is 24, but this is the first time I've been able to really, again, engage with the board. is the first time I've been able to really, again, engage with the board in this manner.
Okay.
The, the land that, that I was talking about, which, the one that's shown there that's highlighted, which abuts your property, it's between your property and then way uphill is Hemlock, St. Jude, Loisel, and Caesha.
Oh, St. Jude, yeah.
Yeah, that property's on the market, has been on the market for a year and a half now, for like 5 million, 5.9 million or whatever, 270 acres. We did, we had a concept plan years and years and years ago that came off of those two dead ends at the end of, I think it's Hemlock and St. Jude. I don't, I don't think anything ever got approved, but there's some, there's some potential access issues with that, with wetlands and whatnot. So that's a whole nother story. But there was, I'm just, I just want, I'm trying to get the council's question answered here. There was, if you look on the bottom of that part, let me resume share here. This parcel right here, which is, so this is St. Jude right here, this piece of land, which is before you get to game on, at the end of Westminster Road, that was permitted years and years and years ago for, and, or, I think it was permitted, we were close to permitting an over 55 development there. Louis Lund was the developer. He's since sold it to another developer. There were, there were plans to build on that one, but that's way uphill from, from this site. That's almost at the end of Westminster Hill Road. So just trying to get everyone's bearings for what's going on. Okay.
It is not a hearing process, and this is not for or against the project. So if you have, getting some good feedback would be, would be great.
My name is Dr. Kendra Sullivan-Goden. I live on Stickney Road, on the corner of Stickney and Ashburnham. And I was at the first session where this gentleman wanted to put houses out there. We were told at that time that the Army Corps of Engineers at one time had deemed that a floodplain. Those of us out there, we have concerns. Right now, we're being decimated. We're Mad River, which has decimated us with water. They're up there taking down all our trees on Stickney Road. We're having water coming down, and it's damaging property. It is causing us more problems. We don't, we moved there 28 years ago, this nice little idyllic place, and we loved it because we were in the country. But with everything that's being done up there, and now you put 24 houses in, the thing of it is, we used to have wonderful wildlife. Right now, the best you see now is a bobcat running for its life across 12 because it has nowhere to run anywhere over there, because the trees and the water has been affected all the way around us. The bears, the moose, the deer, foxes. You wonder why you're getting foxes on Main Street.
Can you, I understand you have an issue, concern with water and wildlife.
Right. Well, you know, the thing of it is, that I don't come in, I don't speak to you people often. I just pay my taxes, keep my mouth shut. But I'm to the point now where I'm getting a little upset, because you are, not you, but, our world is being devastated, and nobody in this city cares. You know, I hear, you know, what's a solar field? A solar field devastated us. What's this? What's that? We don't need any more devastation up where we are. We really, truly don't.
Thank you.
And I figured that I had the right to say that, and I did.
And you'll have another opportunity when, if the applicant submits a sub...
Thank you, but I wanted to tell you that I am one of the first ones that was here for the first time around.
Okay.
Just...
And again, I'm going to read, this is not a special permit. The board doesn't have discretion on this, so we can only, again, help shape the project, and they have to comply with all the environmental laws and stormwater laws that are on the books, and it's to guide that.
Also, at one time, that supposedly was a floodplain.
So I did, so I did pull up the flood overlay in our GIS, which is right there. So you do have, obviously, Phillips Brook and a very small area around Phillips Brook that's floodplain, as well as this outlet here. But most of the site is outside the flood zone, almost all of it. Almost all the developable portion where they're, where they're building. Once you get to the other side of Phillips Brook, it's wetlands, but they're not...
Somebody watches what's done, yeah.
Yeah, well, so that's part of, that's part of what the city's responsibility is. And not only the developers' responsibility, but the engineers that draw these, to draw them correctly. And we'll, we'll look into that as part of the approval.
So we got feed, so this is great, because it's like, we have feedback of, please, you know, the flood, has it been a previous issue with potential for floodplain? There's also, please take a look at, there's a biomap with a critical sensitive area. Take a look at that, and what does that mean? Are there any thresholds there, or considerations that have to be looked at regarding that, and what is the proper venue? So we got feedback from, they got feedback from DPW. So they're going to look at taking these comments and doing their homework to see what comes back with, if or when they come back with another plan that looks like they could, that looks like would meet the criteria that they could develop like that. So, so in front of us now, the board has to make a decision within 45 days of receipt of the submission for preliminary. Again, we don't have to decide any, per se, but we can do approval with or without modification or disapproval.
So, so I think the way we've handled this in the past is, so we can either, we can either just not vote on it entirely, which, as you, I've read to you, is a possibility, or we can just vote that conceptually, assuming that they meet the provisions of our zoning bylaw, that can, that conceptually, it's a, it's a, it falls into the category of a definitive subdivision, which is kind of a categorical statement that can't be, that can't be contested. If you meet our zoning bylaw, it's a definitive subdivision. There will be a lot of things that are going to come up as we get into it. I will say that the applicant has been very helpful and very forthcoming. We met, I think you met with Paul and I at one point. I think you met with, did you meet with Economic Development Task Force? Yeah, you met with EDTF. So, I mean, we've had, we've had a lot of time where a lot of people in the city have had chances to give input on this project so far. There will be a lot more time when we get to the actual definitive plan. As I'm sure you know, once we get the nuts and bolts of what the project is, the DPW engineering department, fire department, maybe for access, all those sorts of things, water, wastewater, they're all going to have input as far as, you know, what's the right way to do this? And all those are just fine-tuning things, because you'll come with a plan that, that meets the minimum of our zoning bylaw, and then we'll just make it work well for the, for the neighborhood and for the city. So...
What is the board, the majority of the board thinking? Just approval modification or no decision at all, or disapproval?
So I think our best bet is, like I said, just, we make a, we make a determination that we approve it based upon the theoretical conditions that we had thrown out there, water, wastewater, DPW comments, city departments.
Complying with all of these aspects.
Yeah, compliance with city departments, with the zoning ordinance. If all those things are met, we can't deny the project anyway, meaning if they meet the minimum standards of our zoning bylaw and our subdivision rules and regs, then, you know, it's, it's just fine-tuning the project. And if you'd like, Paul, I'll just put all that in the form of a motion.
I'm okay with that, or majority of the members okay with that?
I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that.
All right. I will put that...
Can I just say one thing? I just want to reiterate that, as Paul alluded to earlier, but I don't know if you specifically read it, approval doesn't necessarily mean it's guaranteed approval. You still need to meet all the conditions of our zoning bylaw and all the stipulations the city requires. So it's just approving concept of the preliminary plan.
Yes, yes.
It's not, it's just a, it's not binding by the board, just because, yeah.
Yes, understood.
Yep.
At all. And Paul made a motion?
Second that motion.
And with a second. And all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say opposed. Alex?
Aye.
Eileen?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye. All right, we have that.
And once you get the plan drawn up, do you, I mean, we're talking months, I assume, before this plan's drawn up.
Oh, for sure. I, I mean, I'm working with Dillison Roy, who are very good, but it will be months, probably six months.
So, so the reason why I say that is, when you're at the point where you have the plan drafted, the plan drawn, as soon as you can get it out to Chantel and to city departments, she, you can get it to her, and then she can disseminate to city departments. Most of our city departments, especially given that it's a large project, are going to need at least probably three weeks to a month to review everything. So just keep that in mind.
Sure.
You know, just so that, you know, no one's, you know, we often get...
A big rush.
Yeah, we often get stuff three days before a hearing, and they say, can you look at it? And it's just not fair, especially to DPW. I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot to ask of engineering at DPW when, when we don't have, you know, a month of leeway.
Yeah, very understandable.
Perfect. And, and part of the, part of the first hearing, ideally, we have some, we have all, all or some of the department comment by the time you're back here for the definitive plan. That way, we have answers to questions, and we don't have to just keep continuing hearings.
Roger, very good.
All right. Let us know if you, do you have any questions for us?
I, I don't at this time, no.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming out this evening. Thank you. And I do want...
We didn't vote.
We did vote.
Did we vote? Oh, sorry. I'm blocking out apparently. All right.
We did vote. And I just, I do want to thank the public and the applicant, and thank for all their, the public participation in the comments. They are very welcome and very helpful.
Thank you.
Do I have a question? When this comes around now, will we all be notified that they, whatever is coming up?
So there is a provision, I think I read that it says, it actually said in the subdivision rules and regs, I was reading through them, the other, of course, yet again, it said, I think it said abutters. But typically, we do within 300 feet of abutters. So not just like the abutter, it's out 300 feet if you hook me a butter to the abutter scenario. So I, I think we should, it should follow the same rule. We should ensure that it follows the same.
I mean, either, either way, the short answer is, if you're within 300 feet, you should get noticed.
Yes.
That's the short answer.
You know what? We don't talk a lot of problems, but right now...
We welcome public participation, if you have it.
And I'm one of these people, you can't complain if you don't know, and you bring it to the source. And so you know what? I've brought it to the source. And we'll just see what goes from here.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Bring that.
You too.
All right. Have, Liz is on, Liz is our sole member here. We have CDBG.
Thanks for being patient, Liz.
Year 50 project review and recommendations.
Liz, the person that never goes home.
Yeah.
But not going home at 10 o'clock tonight, I hope.
No, no. I don't think, I spend a lot of time with this, and I don't...
There was a lot of pre-work done in order to streamline this, to make it happen and the agenda go as smooth as it does.
For sure.
Acknowledged.
All right. So let's see here.
So on other business this evening, we have the CDBG Year 50 Project Review and Recommendations. And we got a draft from our Community Development Office. And again, this is just board recommendations. Is this back to the mayor's office or city?
Correct. So this is the, what you have in front of you is the staff recommendation to the planning board, in order for you to deliberate, make your recommendations. And then from here, from your recommendations, it would go to the mayor to then review and make her recommendations for funding.
Okay.
And, and I will say, we did consult with the mayor to understand what her preferences were when we made our recommendations.
It's always a good thing, because it's, yeah, you want to make sure you're on the right path.
I had a couple of questions off the bat that are just administrative. And the first one is, in your recommendations to us, you had $190,000 for admin, but the estimated cap was 183, 367.
Again, that's just being optimistic that we get more money than, because we don't actually know exactly what we're going to get yet. We are making an estimate.
Right, yeah, I suppose. So, so what happens to that 7,000 if the 183 ends up being correct? Does Community Development have unilateral control to put that 7 where they want it?
No, we, the final, the number would be refined to whatever the cap is at, or whatever we think the cap is going to be when the mayor makes her recommendation. So this is, it's not likely, but on the off chance that we actually...
There's no way you're going to know in a month.
Yes, this information before the mayor makes her recommendations.
And, and the bigger reason why I asked that is, that 7,000 can answer partially one or two of the changes that I was talking, that I, I had originally talked about. I want to preface this by saying that I think you guys encapsulated the things that I thought were particularly important. I, I don't have anything that I'm exceptionally bullish on that, you know, there's a couple of them that, you know, I had saw, like, for instance, in public services, you know, you paid out 19,000 for the Health Department's street outreach, the warming center and all that stuff. My recommendation was 20, and I made up that 1,000 by taking it from the Spanish American Center section, instead of six, making it five. I think you can go either way. The one thing that I was thinking of is, while I'm, the Spanish American Center does very important things, I think that there's been a lot of conversation recently about the homelessness issue, and especially when it's really cold. Obviously, we have severe weather changes these days that, you know, whatever we can do to keep that warming center open as long as possible or as much as possible, that's really all I thought about. So that was, that was one of the things that stuck out. And I won't even say it stuck out, because either way, it doesn't make a huge difference either way. But I don't know.
And I will say, just to the point of that warming center, I happened to talk to Sue Christensen yesterday, who's very involved with that. She's our, she oversees the Fitchburg street outreach, and she said they had over 30 folks at the mechanic street warming center just this past weekend. It was, it was desperately needed this weekend.
But I would assume there's a negligible difference to their operation in 19 versus 20, is the reason why you chose 19?
This was some of the math that the mayor had suggested.
Okay.
But I do think it's, a thousand dollars is going to make a...
It's not something I feel comfortable, and it's not something I feel strong enough fighting for. I just wanted to, you know, to, you know, the, one of the points I had. So, you can go, Paula. I, I got us...
No, I don't think I have any comments.
So I did have, so with the list, let me see if I can pull it up here. Hold on one second. With the list, Kim was nice enough to send me a list of projects that we funded that, let me see if I can find it. Projects we funded that are, that are outstanding.
DPW projects.
Yeah. Well, so no, not just that. So money that was, hold on, let me find it first before I talk about it. I just got to go to the right folder.
As Paul's looking that up, does anybody else at board have any feeling, one way or the other, on some of the...
The one that popped out to me, anyway, on this list, was number 21, School Department, the Crocker Field.
Yep.
That particular committee, you know, Mr. Lamie and Mr. Kazanjin, you know, they've been working on the Crocker Field restoration for years and years now. And I was just, a very dedicated bunch, trying to get that stadium back together. And I was just wondering if there's any way that that project could be fully funded this year, year 50. That's the one thing that popped out of my mind, anyway.
I will say, having done this many years, we do fund them pretty much every year. There have been exceptions, but generally speaking, they've, they, they get quite a bit of CDBG money. I...
And matching funds, so it is good thing.
I don't disagree. We'd have to find, you'd have to find 10 out of something in the first or third category that's, I mean, I suppose, I suppose you could take it out of sign and facade if you wanted to.
That one doesn't have a cap, right? It's Public Services that has the cap.
Right, it doesn't have, there's no, yeah, Public Services is the only one that's 15%.
And admin.
Yeah, planning and admin. You could take, I mean, there is, there is some overlap, and I understand why they do it, but there is some overlap... it, but there is some overlap in the project that you guys are proposing, the small business development funds, the FRA funds and the New View Technical Assistance. They're, they do different things, but there's overlap in all of them. I, I understand why they all exist. I'm not picking on them in particular. So, to Peter's point, if you, I mean, if you wanted to, you, you'd either have to take it from one of those three programs or probably sign and facade. You can't, so, you can't take it out of, so the crosswalks, I've been told by at least two counselors that they want to see them happen. I know that I was contacted specifically by one who said, they asked if we approved it. And I said, we don't approve anything. So, but, but still, I think the crosswalks were very important to some of the counselors, so those might be tough. The fitness center, we can't because we're, we already paid for the materials, so we now have to do the pad to get the materials put in.
What about streetscapes?
So, that's the rail trail. That's the connector for the rail trail. It's the next phase for the rail trail, so that's, that's a tough one to.
I will say with the, with crosswalks, I believe they proposed six crosswalks. And one or two of those crosswalks are really crosses where you have no sidewalk on either side, no driveway on either side. And so, if, if it's, and this, I guess, would be maybe a question for Nick, if he's still here, you know.
Realistically, the way I saw it was, why won't you, why wouldn't you have, like, one at the Gables, one towards Bella Vista, and then one at the intersection? Isn't that enough? Isn't that enough for all the people there?
There's another one that's not on John Fitch Highway, but on.
Earl Street?
Earl or Townsend.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, yeah, where that, probably where that V intersection is, I bet. But, I mean, you could, I, I don't, the problem is, when you go through all these, there's, there's so many that you could fund or couldn't fund. I mean, I won't go.
I don't know if it's hard to, like, say what to pull it from. If you're just expressing board of whether or not you could, it's like, make some adjustment. But then it's like, you don't want it to come from, you know, something else that's desirable, I guess.
I will say with the Crocker Field project, it's three elements, which I believe each element could stand alone, right? So, we would be funding a couple of elements and then the next one element would be pushed off to the next application.
I, I think that the, if, if we wanted to do that, I, I do think that we should have, we should have our set of recommendations, which you can, we can just change this. If you wanted to make that 10, I think, to be fair, it should come out of something else that's aesthetic, since we're, you know, you want to compare apples to apples, aesthetic for aesthetics, you take it out of sign and facade. Then you have to ask yourself, we have to ask ourselves, but you, Peter, because you brought it up, have to ask yourself, is repairing some of the signs and facades downtown more important or keeping up Crocker? They both have merits, but that's the question you'd have to ask.
And not just downtown with the sign and facade, gateways too.
Right. But it's got to be within the block or an area, which is predominantly this area, Claygon.
Water Street.
But it's not far up Water Street, right?
River Street.
It's just the patch and it's not like all where.
That's where it would primarily happen.
Yeah.
But we can also, we can fund a sign as business assistance, which right now, we're, like, we're, you know, we.
Okay.
Yes.
So, something to think about, Peter. I wouldn't necessarily be against it, it's just a question of, you know, what we take it from.
Do you have any thoughts on where you'd like to see the?
I noticed that the New View Communities Small Business and Technical Assistance Fund was fully funded.
Agreed.
At 30,000. I mean, what exactly is that used for in the city?
Oh, that, that is very robustly used. So, every time a, a small business is looking to apply for any kind of funding for their business, whether it's through our city loan funds or the chambers or another entity, they really need to have a business plan and a financial package put together, and New View helps them with all of that. So, they're doing that for many, many businesses. Certainly, every business that gets a loan from us, we see them going to New View. And it's not just about preparing the packages, but it's making sure that they are ready for the business. And so, we, you know, we get feedback from New View about the, the capacity that business owner has to move forward, their readiness, you know, those, those sorts of things that are really critical for us to understand before we're going to give a loan. So, they've, they've actually expanded the work that they did. So, I think this, I, I'm surprised that they waited as long as they did to ask for more money.
I mean, you could, you could make, you could make that 10 just by going back to what we said and just make the 90 for John Fitch and Pearl Hady. I mean, that'd get, you would think that gets the majority of what needs to get done with those sidewalk and curb cuts done. You know, if there's, you know, half of one out of the six that don't get done, so be it. Oh, I say half of one, I don't, I don't mean half of, I mean, if it doesn't get done, so be it. You can get the other ones completed, you can complete that project to the scope that, you know, it might have to go back to DPW committee, commission or whatever it is to just rubber stamp it. But if you want to do that, Peter, I, I don't have a problem with that.
I'd be okay with that.
Just suggest that 10,000 from the ADA John Fitch and Pearl Street go towards Crocker Field.
That's it.
The, the question I had was, so Amy had, so Kim put together something, Amy had a list of, I guess, funds waiting to be spent. And one of them that, maybe it's just a status update I'm curious about. So, I think it was last year, we did the, we funded the design for the rail trail last phase, the connector, that hasn't been spent. Why hasn't it been spent yet?
We're working with Vasan O'Neil. I can't tell you exactly why it hasn't been spent, but these, they, they, there's a lot of projects on their plate, there's a lot of projects on DPW's plate. And I'm sure that is the reason.
Well, the reason why I say that is, you know, that it's going to take forever to complete it. Once it gets funded, it's been funded, so shouldn't it be in their hands to be working on right now? I don't know.
And it, and it may be, to be perfectly honest, I don't know exactly what the status is.
Okay. Like I said, I mind, so public service is the hardest one. Mine, we're pretty much in line with what the community development staff had. So, you know, hats off to you guys. I think that those worked pretty well. Obviously, we all know that's a tough category. And then it's, you know, it's just a question of.
Now, always our general recommendation of try not to fund city positions.
That was my, that's my.
The overall piece we have, yeah, it's kind of like, and it was less, but it's like, there's the Board of Health. And then there's the overtime for FPD. I mean, it's a, it's fantastic, they always need more money. So, I know, but it's the same, it's, it's the same amount and it's always in our number, and their allocation is growing. I mean, our allocation is less and less. So, if anything, some of these percentage wise should be dropping to some degree too and not be just the same amount, just say, overall. In that regard, it should be, like, work, like, we, like, weaning off, but also since, since we're not getting funded as much, it's kind of competes with all those other interests too. So, I know it's a balance.
I, and I agree. I, I look forward to.
And there's only so much to go around.
The drug enforcement foot patrol has gone down. That was over 80 at one point.
One point. Yeah, but it's been 60 for a while.
It's been 60, it's been 65, 62, something like that. Matter of fact, I think it was last year or the year before that, where I said to the chief, I said, why, you know, why are you comfortable asking for less? And he, basically, the answer was, there's only so much money to go around. I was like, okay, well, that's the right answer, I guess, but.
Yeah, and I understand, like, it is very such a competition. And it's, it's like, at one side, it's like funding community services for kids after school and things like that to help. Also, you know, helps with the community and policing and other aspects too, so.
I look forward to the day where we do not have to do that.
We want to see them do, the work that they do is.
It will never happen.
Is, we want to have them, have them continue that. So, it's like, wherever funds that can be put in that direction is great. I think that's why it was an oddball even last year, because it was like 61, 378,05. So, it's like, whatever change was left.
Yep.
There we go. So, we know that is a, that is always a priority.
Looks like Amy, the, the list I was given too, there's 90-ish thousand dollars waiting on phase one and phase two park hill upgrades, which.
Yeah, I think part, part of that is the, I believe they needed some more funding to finish it out. So, but I'm, I don't know if Nick is able to answer, to speak to that at all.
So, I, I don't think it was a funding issue. I think it was just a manpower issue.
Okay.
So, the grant had included DPW labor as the.
Oh, okay.
The, the means of, of completing the grant scope. And we haven't had that labor force fully available. I know we, we did some of the phase one work, but some of the phase two work is outstanding. And the plan is to get that taken care of this spring.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, certainly, I, I know that more than one person in the city has told me, try not to put any more on DPW's plate. So, my thought, through this whole CDBG process, my thought was, if it involves DPW, which thankfully, I don't think any of these really did, if it involved DPW, that, that, you know, kind of back off that, so.
I think we're looking.
Yeah, so, one of the, one of the issues was that DPW always started $100,000 in deficit and was required to conduct grant work to, to make up that $100,000. And that requirement has since been removed. And I think that's a good move and it's going to allow the DPW to start focusing on some of the outstanding petition work and seek fix complaints that we've received. And I'd like to start directing a lot of our, our CDBG work to contractors so that we, we can try to climb out of that, that backlog that we're in.
Nick, since I have you on here, I, I know you, you're probably more familiar with the ADA crosswalk improvements, the John Fitch and Pearl Street than anyone because of the, being in coordination with the DPW commission. The amount that's on this, so, there was 100,000 requested, the community development recommendation was 90. If we cut that a little bit, and let's say 75, 80, let's call it 80, does that, does that still do enough to satisfy the petition?
I think it does. So, we need to, we need to create ADA crosswalks at each of the locations where we've had a pre-existing crosswalk, so crosswalks that were painted prior to the ADA regulations coming into effect. My plan was to use some chapter 90 funding as a match. And if I need to increase that chapter 90 funding by $10,000 to make up the difference, it's not really that big of a deal. So, there were six crosswalks proposed in that, that CDBG grant application. Five on John Fitch, one on Pearl Street, very close to Townsend Street. So, I, I think we can still get it done with, with that $90,000.
Great. Thanks, Nick.
Yep.
Okay, I'm good.
Very helpful. And then, and just that, a general comment that always comes up too is the Boys and Girls Club transportation and whether, and it's like, we always have that, it's like that number. They always ask for that figure and it's just, I know they have to make up for it and it's just, whether or not there's still other, other avenues, not CDBG, to be paying for bus transportation, like, out of some other fund and/or the state.
I will say, the mayor said that there were, they were in the process of negotiating a new bus contract. It's that time and that being able to cross the line is going to be part of that conversation.
Oh, that's good news.
So, I don't know what the outcome will be.
You still pay to get them there, even if you can cross the line.
Yeah. So, I, I am hopeful. It's forever frustrating that you can practically see the Boys and Girls Club from the line and we can't get them there without special busing, so.
It's a stellar facility. So, I know on other aspects, people go, well, we should have one in our city. It's, but I think then you'd be missing out because you can't have, you know, two of the same. So, it would almost be like a little satellite of something. But it's like, it's, that's a really large and wonderful campus that it's like, really worth being able to get there to do that.
Right. I would, on the, the same token, I wouldn't want to see a satellite in Fitchburg that doesn't have the amenities that the main campus has because they have so many.
Programs and opportunities.
Programs and amenities and opportunities.
We have a satellite, we have the Y. I mean, it's like.
That's true. We have this.
So, it's, you know, it's, it, you just don't have that large scale system and projects that they have there, plus the facility, so.
The thing that bothers me, and I brought this up at the meeting, that we just had on this CDBG money. If the facility is truly to service Fitchburg and Lemister students, then Fitchburg should not be put at a disadvantage by having to pay so much more for bus, busing costs.
Just because it's not in our city.
Right. It should be, it should be absolutely split 50/50 between Lemister and Fitchburg.
But Lemister pays their share. They're, they're paying for their buses.
No, no.
That's what they're, but.
If Fitchburg is paying 100 and Lemister's paying 50, then both should pay 75.
Well, they're paying for whatever it is, how many schools they have to do in order to get the kids there, the same thing that Fitchburg has to do with their schools to get there. So, the numbers are always going to be different, depending on how many kids participate from which schools to get there.
I don't know that this is true, but think of this logically. They bus their students there, we don't bus any students there, so theoretically, Lemister pays more than we do. We don't bus any students there because we can't.
But it's.
They, all their students in Lemister get bused there. It, all, I shouldn't say all the students, the students in Lemister that, that, that are able to get bused, I think, think they bus them to the Boys and Girls Club because it's in their town. We can't because it's not in Fitchburg. So, that's.
How do they get there?
What's that?
How do they get there?
Private transportation or?
Right. The Boys and Girls Club hires two buses to go pick up the students in Fitchburg and bring them to the school. So, they, they are paying, it is a real cost that they don't incur from Lemister because Lemister has it as a bus stop, right?
And it's a public. So, it's a charge to the.
I get it.
What I'm trying, what I'm trying to say is, we don't pay, we pay, we pay CDBG a very small amount to, to keep the door open. Now, I mentioned this in the meeting, there, there was a period in time where, when Larry was, was, you know, running the block grant funds, where we had a conversation of, if we gave them a dollar, they were mandated to bus kids there. That no longer apparently is, is the way things work.
I mean, if we fund the bussings, if we fund any of the busing, then they're obligated to do what they say they're going to do. And if they say they're going to bus this many people, then they need to do it.
Right, but the amount we pay doesn't cover all the busing.
No, it doesn't cover.
Right. That's the, that's the point I'm trying to make, that theoretically, to answer your question, the city would have to come up with money to do that. And I think that that's, you know, that, that's outside of, we, we don't have enough money in block grant to be able to pay for, what, 60, whatever, 67, 5, whatever they're requesting. But we give them as much as we can to, to, to kind of spur them to keep the door open for Fitchburg residents is why we've always done this on block grant funding. You give them whatever you can to say, you're getting this money to keep some Fitchburg students there, to keep the doors open for them, because technically, they don't have to. If we don't give them money, they don't have to do anything. They're private nonprofit.
I mean, well, they would like, I mean, if they're, if they couldn't afford to pay for the busing, then Fitchburg residents, students would still be eligible to go there. They'd have to find their own transportation.
Right.
And that's not tenable, I think, for, for many of our students.
Yeah.
So, we're just, just bringing up the, just bringing up the issue of there should be some other mechanism to fund to busing to get there, whether it be the school system or is it really just getting, actually, additional monies from the state regarding this, for this additional after-school busing criteria, eliminating if there's any, you know, what's, is it legislatively about the line situation? It could, they could fund it, but there's a line. It could, they could fund it, but there's a line.
I mean, that category, that's, that's in the 15% category anyway. So even if you could find the money, you're going to take it away from something else, which is much harder to do than it looks.
But right now, there's money being, you know, doled up from 1% funds and everything else, so.
So do we have any other recommendations for changes? Because I just have one suggestion.
You have, aside from what?
If we make a recommendation, my recommendation would be to, that we are in agreement with the recommendations provided by community development, with the exception of the adding 10,000 to the Crackerfield handrail bench and steel painting. And I agree with Peter particularly because it's an accessibility issue too. It's probably a good idea to get that done. Take it out of the ADA crosswalk improvements with the one caveat that when and if we find out that we're 7,000 overfunded for administration, that that goes back to the sidewalk category.
That's what I was thinking too. That would make sense.
Because I think that's what's going to end up happening, to be honest with you.
It is.
So the wash, that, that would mean the net change is negligible to what was proposed anyway.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to add or comment on? Alex or Lynn?
Let me just, I know this isn't a public hearing, but let me just see if.
Hearing none?
Yeah, no, there's no comments or anything.
No, but I didn't know if Alex or, nothing? Okay, just checking, just double checking.
Yeah, no, I'm all set too.
I'll put that in the formal motion.
All right. A motion's been made. Is there a second to forward recommendations regarding the CDBG year 50? And I'll just say, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
So you can just add a category next to yours and just put plausible recommendation and then just swap the 10s and then see what happens with the 7. You probably just have to put an asterisk next to the planning and admin and say, if and when it gets reduced. Goes into that alone. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Liz.
Oh, Liz, don't go anywhere. I did have two quick questions for you. Paula, can we do this now? I just had two updates that I just wanted to know. Someone asked me recently about what's going on with the two RFPs, the Steve Sena RFP on Rollstone and 80 Lunenburg Street.
Ah, did you see the activity that's happening?
I saw, there was something there. I don't, I haven't seen any, I haven't seen stuff moving yet, but I saw vehicles.
So we still own both of those. 80 Lunenburg Street, we actually have the, so I don't recall if we had this conversation before, but we have a grant to clean up some of the soils. So that's who's there right now, is they're finally getting those soils out. They found a small oil tank there today when they were doing it. But amazingly, really small and nothing, nothing really in it. So it was like a very small increase in the cost. But, but so once they finish that, then we can finally convey to WCHR.
Now, who is that?
Worcester Community Housing Resources.
And what are they building?
They are building 18 to 20 townhouse style condos for homeownership on that site.
Affordable homeownership?
It would be affordable between 80 and 120%.
Okay. Okay.
And then the 260 Rollstone, that one, just today, my attorney reached out and said that they are still working on the PNS, they're revising. Asked if I was okay with an extension to close in April with a potentially a 90-day extension to that if we need it. And that's because the Steve Sena is currently working with the Commonwealth Builders, the funding source for that. And he's meeting with them sometime soon. So I think that actually is a really good sign that he's actually having conversations with the funder.
Are you planning on closing before permits are approved?
Yeah, the closing would happen before that.
Okay. With a clawback, I presume?
There would be a clawback, yeah.
Okay, if he doesn't obtain the permits or do it in a certain way?
Right, correct. But, you know, he was pretty clear that he wanted, he wanted to keep the PNS, he wanted to keep it at PNS stage until he secured his funding. So that's just a really good sign, I think, that they're, that we're moving this along now.
Okay.
So that's, that's that.
Thank you.
Good. And then the only other thing, and I'll just mention it, that though it's not necessarily you, it's more for Chantel. But because this is so important and because it just came up in block grant funding and I think Nick's still on, that I have it in my calendar, hopefully Chantel can add it in her calendar, that sometimes, say, April 1st, to schedule a meeting with the folks at CHC to finalize the paving schedule for Japanos. I was told at last, I was just reading meeting minutes and emails from last summer and in the fall, that originally in the summer, we said we were hoping it was getting done before the end of the, the, the school year, the paving season. And then sometime in, I think, October, there was an email about it'll be done in the spring, or at least that's the hope. So I don't want to take the foot off the gas on that one.
I have that in my calendar too, to follow up. And I want to say it was like the end of March.
March 30th is what I think is technically in my calendar.
What we were going to do to follow up because they, you know, they wanted to.
And I know the War.
We all wanted them to move forward.
The War Four Council keeps pushing me on that too, so it's not just us.
I want to bring up a point about that, is that I received a notice about a month ago regarding work on the street that included Japanos with, for like, like separation work or it was from like the Concom that work's going to be conducted. And Japanos was included on it, so I was confused.
So it is combined sewer separation work, but the work that's going to be done in that neighborhood is, is manhole only and not any road excavation work. So it's, it's work within existing structures that are out in that area.
Okay.
I don't believe it's on Japanos exactly. I think it's one of the adjacent roads. But we looked into this, we received some inquiries after the Conservation Commission meeting. So it won't interfere with the paving work.
Okay. That was just my, the big concern was like, we thought we addressed any other, any other work that needed to be done in that road.
And obviously, Nick, you'll be an important part of that meeting too. I know that there was some miscommunication last summer that you and I went back and forth about, about. You know, you had thought that there was a, there was a cap on how much money that they were supposed to spend. And I had told you that if there was, that they self-imposed that cap. That the, the permit requirement is that they repaved Japanos Drive. If that includes any work that the DPW wants to do with realigning those intersections at Burbank and Nichols, then we can have that conversation on site. I just want you to know, the War Four Council, Andy and I have talked about this at length, that at this point, we want that road to get paved, whether DPW's ready to do work or not. Meaning if they're going to pave it, pave it. And if, if there's stuff that DPW wants to do either beforehand or in conjunction, that's awesome. But I don't want to put it on you as, you know.
Then the applicant needs to realize.
Exactly. Well, so we talked about that as well, that, you know, we'll, we'll have to figure out exactly what that means when we do the site walk. But at this point, I just want the road paved, even if they stop 20 feet from each intersection. And, you know, we, we find a way to do it.
We understand. It's been a long haul. We got to this point now. We want it done, we want it done right if we waited this long.
Yeah, and we, we want to do some work at the intersection with Nichols because that's, that's the area where we actually own part of the roadway. The, the intersection with Burbank Street or Burbank, that, that needs to be done by CHC. We, we can't do work on private property like that.
Perfect. That, that's perfectly fine. And like I said, we just want to, I just want to make sure that, you know, it seems like we're near the end. I just want to take this to the finish line.
To them what is their scope, they need to do.
Yeah. And the last thing I had was, obviously, we're on the same note, still hoping to get a status update about the final quote for Game On Way as well as the sidewalk.
So we're, we're in the process of putting together those contracts right now. I know we've been in the process of putting those contracts together for, for almost a year at this point. But we're, we actually are planning to bid those out in February and have a contractor onboard by April so that we can get Game On Way paved, get the sidewalk installed. And what we'll need to do moving forward is talk to Game On and make sure we understand exactly what their financial commitment is.
Well, so, so the reason why I keep bringing this up, Nick, is, and, and I'm fairly confident, and Chantel can double check this, but I'm fairly confident that they haven't ever given us the 100,000. So the way the permit is written was that when it was approved, Game On was supposed to put $100,000 into an escrow account the city controlled. Exactly. I'm certain that didn't happen, as I was just trying to give everyone the benefit of the doubt. So the reason why I say that is, they are on the hook for $100,000 at a minimum. The, that is only for the sidewalk and any other offsite improvements that the planning board authorizes. So we need to see the quote for the sidewalk individually, how much the sidewalk is, so that we can make sure that A, it falls within the 100,000, which I hope it does. And B, if it doesn't, the overage gets spent on any other infrastructure improvements or neighborhood improvements that, that we deem fit. We're getting to the point where Paul and I have been saying for maybe a year now that as soon as we get through these, this backlog of stuff, we got to go through the permit conditions that Game On. I started going through them the other day and there's a lot in there that we got to vet out. And so anyway, so we need the quote for the sidewalks. We need to authorize the payout for the quote for the sidewalks. And by that, we mean we need the Game On to give us a check for 100,000 to put into an account that we can then take out for the sidewalk amount. Now, if we find out it's more than 100 and they say we'll pay for it, then fine, no problem. The overlay of Game On Way, I believe that's a separate permit condition that is not part of that $100,000. Again, when we get to that, we'll have to verify that.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I think there's other outstanding work that Game On is on the hook for. I, I'm not sure they've installed the water lift station or pump station that they were supposed to install to make sure that the pressures at Game On are adequate. They came up with a temporary bypass solution or interim solution. But the understanding was that they would install that pump station at some point. My, my guess is the sidewalks are going to cost more than $100,000, just knowing what the bid climate is right now. But certainly, we'll have some more information specific to that within the next couple of months.
Yeah, I mean, if it costs more than 100, then you can go directly to them, ask them for money. Just have them pay. Then we can just skip that whole escrow step and not worry about it. But yeah, that, that's fine, however it gets done. I just wanted, I, I know these things have to start in the winter. That's why I bring these up now, to get things ready for some spring, summer, so.
Consider those under communications.
Yep, yep. They're just, yeah, they're just project updates, so. Okay. Thank you, Nick. And that's it.
Thank you. We have, still under other business, our planning board reorganization for calendar year 2024.
I'll make a motion to nominate Paula for Board Chair.
Second motion.
Okay, a motion's been made with a second. I guess all those in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed?
Me, no.
I want, thank you, everyone, for your support with that, with that role. And I guess similarly is nominate Paul Fontaine for Vice Chair.
Second.
With a second. And motions are made with a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? All right.
Thank you, everyone.
We have minutes, and I don't know if anybody got to see the minutes. So we have June minutes.
Do you want me to pull them up?
We can pull up the June minute. I mean.
There's a lot of changes. That's why I asked if you want, because we're not going to go through all of them.
I don't think anybody saw the minutes to begin with, that's the thing.
All right, let me pull it up here. Hold on.
They were never posted till half an hour before the meeting, so. So I don't think anybody saw the minutes. So we can, that they're done, but we can put them off till our next.
So these are with the red line changes?
Don't put red line on there, please. There's not even changes. The whole thing was draft, so it's not even a change.
So I'm not, hold on, hold on. An opening Google Docs. I don't know how to get rid of red line changes in Google Docs.
Oh, I don't know about Google Docs.
Yeah, exactly.
That's why it should be posted as a PDF. We like to Word document in order to make changes, you know, vet them out. But on the postings, we post them as a PDF so we don't get all the red line stuff, so. And since they, it wasn't even posted to change yet, it's just still the original draft, just trying to get it up there.
Our admin assistant has been wonderful in helping us out with this, but she's trying to catch up on planning board and conservation at the same time and manage our payroll and budget and invoices and a number of other things. So she's awesome, but those minutes are very intense to, that's a lot.
They are, because the transcript is like 67 pages and I had to read through the transcript to, through the minutes. It took four hours.
And it takes her the four hours to put the minutes together, listening to the, to the transcript, so.
Bear with me for one second.
Yeah, so I, yes, no, I, I understand the workload, but we gotta, we gotta work on getting caught up.
We are, we are not even treading water at this point. We're losing, we're still losing ground. We're not even doing one a month. We had two this month, so we're automatically one behind.
Get the last month.
So let me get rid of.
Well, it's fresh. Otherwise, it gets harder when, the further you go away.
I wonder if there's some merit to always doing the previous month.
Just do the previous one and one, one, the previous one.
The more recent ones are, they're easier for us too, because like what happens now, so we did June, Paul and I did June.
Did we read it all?
This past week. I literally had to watch the whole June meeting over again before I read the meeting minutes because I didn't remember anything that we did. So I read, I watched the whole meeting in the background while I was doing work and then went back and did the meeting minutes. So anyway, these, I don't have the red line changes on here anymore, so I can't tell you what changed, Paula, but there it is. Oh, hold on.
But out, since they didn't go out to the board though, we can just say, well, we're just, we're going to put it on. We can put it on for February's minutes, since they're that late anyway. And we'll hope we'll have another set or two for February. But, um, I'll, the same, June's were pretty good vetted out. And I think July was very light.
You spent all that time getting, you literally asked me to get it up there. I spent five minutes trying to get.
Well, unless people can review it.
No, 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 no. I'm just, I'm just messing with you. Next month is fine.
So, yeah, we didn't, it didn't get sent to the members.
When everyone sees the changes, Paula and I already made them, so.
Again, they're not, well, changes.
Yeah, they were changing, well.
No, because it didn't go out.
No, no, I'm saying, when everyone sees what, what is going to be up there, those have your, your changes and my changes.
Any edits, yeah.
Yes. Make a motion to adjourn.
A motion's been made with a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, everyone.